Doesn't work for the last time.
On a big day like today.
All right, David Panato, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
David, come on up. I think this, so David's going to brief us on the worst kept secret in Riverhead. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you supervisor and town council members. So I'm presenting the letter of intent for the Epcal property. We've been in negotiations for a few months on this and now's the time where we're at where we can, this can be presented. It's the, letter of intent is between Riverhead, I guess specifically the Community Development Agency and Luminati Aerospace, who is currently an owner and a tenant within a portion of the park. The property that we're discussing is all the developable lots, the drainage reserve areas, the open space habitat protection areas, roadways, and the runway lots. The purchase price is forty million dollars and that's based upon the value of the six hundred acres, acres which are developable. The terms of the letter of intent is Luminati will deposit a half a million dollars with a designated title insurance company escrow agent. And there will be, that's at the signing of the definitive agreement or contract. There's a due diligence period of ninety days of which they have the ability to come in and inspect, to have access to the property and have records on the property. After the expiration of the ninety day due diligence, they will come up with another half a million dollars and we would proceed to a closing. There is some options for extensions if they need additional time for review. The closing shall occur as soon as practical after all the conditions set forth in the definitive agreement are satisfied. And what else? So I, so we're presenting this, this LOI and if it gets accepted by the town board.
I'm hoping it's going to get accepted because we have a non-disclosure agreement and so I'm going to ask the board. We're not voting on it, but since the, since the way this came about, we want to make sure we're at least with a non-disclosure agreement. So I'm going to have you just initial the resolution, but we will formally vote on it on Tuesday.
Okay.
Have the discussions taken place about the recreation trail?
Yep, that's a condition of the letter of intent of the recreation trail he showed. I think I give all my copies.
Yes, well, it's on email. It says, you got it yesterday.
So the recreation trail's covered.
Well, that's with the agreement.
Right.
Once we write the agreement up, that will be in the agreement.
It's actually in there.
Recreation of trail. That's all that'll be done with the agreement.
And there'll be a covenant on the property that it can only be used for, it can't be used for a passenger use. It's only going to be used for.
Yeah, I know, but I'm, I'm just concerned about Line Road and the recreation trail seeing as he wants to buy the entire piece of property, including the preserved areas.
We'll have to move that.
So that is what I'm concerned about because when you go from where the trail is depicted now, which is around the western portion of the western runway or the southern portion of the western runway where the trail is shown now, that is not, that's at the edge of the core area of the pine boughs.
We're gonna, we're gonna move that.
But I know, but I need clarification on this before I sign on any resolution.
Then that's fine. Don't sign on the resolution. We're, we're going to move forward today.
That's on the agreement. We gotta sign this and then we work on the agreement.
To move forward.
This is first. I know, but that's my concern is that they want to move the portion of the trail that bisects the core area from the developable area. And when you go from the developable area into the core area, you can't put pavement. So the skinny tire bikes go on the asphalt, the fat tire bikes go on the limestone to the west in the core area.
Moving it offline road away from the runway so that they can operate should they choose to on that closed runway. So it will be moved further west. We won't put it in the core area. There's property that it can be put further west.
It can't be right by the runway.
And it's not going to interfere with the tiger salamander, thousand foot setbacks from the. I just, you know what? There's a lot of people that have been working for five years in, on this rec trail and trying to get the funding and now we finally have the funding and we have a buyer and I just don't want it to interrupt the progress of the recreation trail. That's all.
We will make sure the recreation trail gets done. You have my word.
Okay.
All right. There's also a, can somebody give me a copy? I gave all my copies out. Can I look at this for a second? There's also, no, that's the resolution. So.
He got mine.
One of the other things that's in here is a covenant that property will not be used to operate a commercial or passenger airport. It won't be listed on aviation charts, basically as a fixed base operator for such things as fueling, hangaring, tie-down parking, aircraft rental, aircraft maintenance, flight destruction, provided to the general public. So there'll never be any, this will never be a commercial airport, passenger airport, no fixed base aviation. This is purely, what we, when we sign this and move forward, we have reintroduced a defense contractor to Calverton. And I can't stress enough that I, I'm not even, when you think about what Dan Preston has done in his lifetime, when you realize that he has three planes hanging in the Smithsonian, twelve hundred patents, this is the real deal. People can say what they want. This guy's and his team of scientists and engineers, these are the real deal. So I, I want the public to understand what the gravity of what we've done. What we have done is reintroduce defense contracting, military aircraft manufacturing at Epcal. So I just want to mention one thing is being able to attract an engineering manufacturing company, there's, there's a multiplier effect with jobs and that's why Long Island has always been striving to keep manufacturing here. For every, so for an iPhone typically, for every thousand jobs, there's fifty-seven hundred jobs created within the local economy supporting buttons, glass, cases, software. So this is more than just having Luminati be here. This is the multiplier of having all of his acres for an whole industry to be able to backfill.
But he'll still have to go through the process, correct?
Through the, well, the subdivision process is going to be.
Well, our process facility, he has to.
Qualified ineligible.
Yeah, we're going to do the qualified eligible. There's the, you have thirty days to negotiate a contract, right? Tight timeframes, not a year, not ten months. Thirty days to negotiate a contract and then within ninety, the yellow eye is in ninety days, ends in ninety days. He puts a half a million dollars down when we sign this and if he doesn't, if he wants an extension, the half a million dollars is non-refundable, comes to the town of Riverhead. At the end of the ninety days, he puts another half a million dollars down. This subdivision is going to be really reduced to five lots. He's not looking for housing. He's not looking for roads and drainage and infrastructure. He's looking to recreate Brumman. That's what he's looking to do. He's looking to recreate Brumman. I mean, so I can't, like, I'm so excited about this that we were able to land him, pun intended. So does anybody else have any?
I just, I want to commend the board. I came on, as you know, last year, but you guys have worked for years putting this together with the subdivision and everything. And it was one of the most important things for me when I came on the board was to want to see this through. And the effort that the board put in, Anne Marie Prudential, Joe Lewis, over the years to create this, to make this finally to be able to happen. Cushman and Wakefield came in for the naysayers out there and there's plenty of you people. Do your research before you look stupid with your blogging. That's all I ask. Really quite simply, the, the property is worth what it's worth. Without an infrastructure put into that property, that property's not worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre, people. It's not. We're very lucky to get this deal. This is going to change the town of Riverhead. This is going to make Riverhead better for, as Councilman Wooten put it, for his, his daughter, for my children, for John's grandchildren. It's a great deal and I'm proud to be part of this board, although I had little to do in comparison to the work that you guys put in over the years. So I applaud you and thank you very much for this.
Of course, another state was going to pay him to go there.
Right. Oh, yeah. No, he was, he was being attracted by another state. Now, we're going to pay him.
Yeah.
He's paying us. That's the New York way.
That's right.
But Dave, maybe you could.
And I don't want to close off either, but I, I can tell you for twenty years now. In fact, I was telling John this morning, I went back to two thousand and seven when it first ran and I remember my speech that I wrote and part of it had to do with Epcal and the fact that there was race ones coming in and there was ski mountains wanting to come in and how that really probably wasn't a good thing long-term for Calverton. I remember that speech pretty, pretty well. And it wasn't until, actually Sean, you got here, that you had a whole different vision. You said, you know what? Why are we going to leave it to some outsider to do the subdivision? We got seventeen million when we sold the core. Let's reinvest and start to do our own subdivision. That way we can create what we wanted. And that really set the ball rolling and, and we, we bought into that. And it's a great thing that we did. So we reinvested it, made it marketable, brought in a great team to help promote it. And it's what we did. So it, it all worked out well.
You know, it's interesting. I'd say it's divine providence that this has worked out the way it did because it wasn't really, when you think about the subdivision, we did, we did not do a subdivision for aircraft manufacturing or any sort of defense contracting. We did the opposite because in two thousand and twelve, we did a study that said, listen, there's no viable use of the aircraft or the, the runways and.
Still mixed use.
And mixed use was the way to go and that's the way we went. And here you got a guy that said, no, I can do this in New York and I'm going to. Can you just speak to the value of the property? Because there's going to be a lot of criticism to the value of the property. So, so Cushman and Wakefield has spent the past year and a half in putting together marketing materials and, and rolling this into our process, which goes out globally. And so evidence of globally, we, last year sold a hundred and seventy-five acres, the LaSalle Military Academy, to a company out of India. So we've had reaches with this property globally as well. We had six interested parties, four offers, and all of them were, were around the, this forty million dollar number. So I think that's evidence enough that this is the value of the property.
Yeah, you don't need an appraisal or.
Right.
It's supposed to be seventy thousand an acre for barren land with no infrastructure. That's not bad.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's based on the six hundred acres. The other, the other interesting. Yeah, the other interesting part about this is because the way Preston wants to do this, there's a, the land has to be mowed. We have figured that just mowing the land is going to cost the town a hundred thousand dollars a year. So he's taking a hundred thousand dollars a year away from us. The runways have not been paved, they're the original runways, the original concrete runways. Now, our engineer estimated several million dollars just to pave the existing runway that we use. Preston, I saw Revett Local, who's saying it's fifteen million. We would never have done this. At some point, the town would have had to shut those runways down. So a huge liability is being taken from us, so.
The other thing to keep in mind in terms of the value of the property is what David spoke to for the multiplier effect. The jobs that Mr. Preston's company is going to be creating here are not retail jobs. They're not menial labor jobs. These are highly skilled jobs.
I appreciate it.
And over a long period of time, you know, over five years, I think it's estimated that they're, he's going to create two thousand jobs. But it's two thousand jobs at a much higher level than just basic industrial jobs might be created. Basic, you know, warehouse or manufacturing. So there's a big return, if you will, on investment for the town. You can't just measure it by the forty million. You have to measure it by the overall impact and measure it in terms of years, over a period of five years. And it's going to have a tremendous impact on the town of Riverhead.
Well, the federal government gave it back to us for economic reasons. They create jobs, they bring in the tax dollars that Brumman was giving us. We could have gave the property away as long as we created jobs. We didn't give the property away. We're getting forty million dollars for the property. Plus, this is going to create the jobs that the federal government gave us the property for and high-paying jobs. It's not going to be any low-paying jobs. These are going to be skilled workers coming here to work on his projects. And I know three or four projects that he has lined up now that he's going to be working with. So I mean, this is a win-win for taxpayers at the town of Riverhead and that's who I'm for. Is what we can do is save the taxpayer, the town of Riverhead money. And this, this is money in their pocket because it will come out and they won't have to pay as high taxes as they're paying now or they won't go up as high. So I mean, this is a, a great opportunity for the town and I think the first thing was to get him here and.
That took a bit of doing too.
We, we got him here. The second thing is to let him now create the jobs. And within five years, we should have some good-paying jobs that, that he's created.
The other thing to keep in mind is his technology is cutting ed, cutting-edge technology as opposed to standard manufacturing and warehousing, which may have a shelf life that could fall prey to other competing factors. To have this level of cutting-edge technology here, based here in Riverhead Town, gives it even more traction and more legs into the future. So fantastic.
I spoke to him and people don't know what he has, what he has lined up that he's going to start bringing here as soon as he gets his property. I mean, he has these people all lined up to come in here and build things. So I mean, he's on his way.
And it'll also help the existing manufacturers that are in the core that are producing materials that he could potentially use for his developments and it'll help the housing market. So we have a lot of houses that'll be boarded up throughout the town and those houses will hopefully be occupied by some of his employees that he plans to bring here. And I think it's a, I think it's a win-win. I think he's a very entrepreneurial spirit and he, the twelve hundred patents, I think Sean said he has, I mean, he's.
He's invested thirty million dollars in Riverhead in eighteen months. I have no idea.
He's quite a brilliant innovator and I wish him the best of luck.
I just, I look forward to a year from now.
Anxious to get to the qualified ineligible to make sure that we get a closing this year.
If anybody's taken a tour of his place, I mean, he's already brought stuff in from Germany that he can use here.
Yeah.
I mean, so he's, he's on the brink of starting. He got all his equipment here and he's ready to go.
All right, so.
I look forward to a year from now when the discussion this panel board has is how to, how to best, best the forty.
I should give you this, I should have given you guys this resolution. This is the one I'm going to ask you guys. This allows me to sign the letter of intent.
On agenda.
Yeah.
If you take a look at that and if you're willing to, I'm not going to sign it.
Because you know what? It's the letter of intent and we still have a big process ahead of us.
Is that here?
Yeah. And we'll still vote it. We're still going to go up as a regular vote on Tuesday.
Yeah.
No, he's got the one that we're signing.
This is, this is a.
So I'd like to say one other thing.
Start moment here.
It's dealing with government, so we're, Cushman Wakefield's private, dealing with government is generally difficult and there's a lot of expertise with dealing with government. This administration here has been extremely entrepreneurial in their thinking and in their accepting ideas, you know, staying within the government confines of what they need to do. It's the unique group here that we have that enables us to go forward. What's that?
We are unique.
Well, listen, if you had a couple of other changes, then maybe you wouldn't work. That's true. You never know.
Yeah, it was very progressive because in most towns, you have to prove to them the value of a plan and a development plan. And in this case, the town had already taken the initiative and understood the value of the development plan and had already initiated it in a very progressive way. So we applaud that.
Mr. Diane, so she has that. Gentlemen, I thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I look forward to you guys attending the closing.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
They will.
They're loving lunch, love you.
All right, Nazar, special permit. Hammond, Jim DeLuca, come on up. We've done this before, right?
Yes, I wonder what the, I thought this was done already.
Did we give him the special permit?
Yes, he did.
It expired though, I think.
Yep.
Yes. And we're still going to put that in the resolution, pass Tuesday, that resolution.
Got it. So Dr. Jeffrey Nazar has a complex of really just two professional buildings on Main Road, just east of Cross River Drive on the south side there. There was a special permit granted for the expansion of this pre-existing, not for use, granted by mostly this board in June of two thousand and fourteen. That was good for two years. That has since expired and I think now Mr. DeLuca is ready to go with the building, this third building. The reason why we're here today is because it expired, you need a new special permit. We need to put up a public hearing again. And you might remember last time there was a public hearing, some people came out and they had concerns over potential flooding or something that might happen with drainage issues.
That was a rest.
So, so they, Mr. DeLuca and Jeff Hartman is an engineer. They did the studies they had to do and, and got a recommendation from the planning board to issue the special permit and so.
That goes back eighteen months ago.
Yeah, it's probably three years now.
Yeah.
And so we did that and we went back to the zoning board of appeals, got approval again. And we did the SWIFTs. That's complete. Your consulting engineer approved it. Your town engineer approved it. So we, we got, we have basically all the approvals except we have to renew this special permit.
This time.
Because of time and now if this is renewed, we can go to the planning board, uh, planning department and hand in the final site plan.
Yeah, because issue with the flooding, with this development back here. And you, and you fix that.
Well, what we did was we left that low area alone and we added, we have forty-seven new pools we're putting in the whole site, as you can see on the site plan. There's a hundred and forty-one linear, vertical feet of pools we put in. And so the, like I said, your consulting engineer approved it. Your town engineer approved it. Engineer that I hired approved it. I approved it. The survey approved it.
Now you're back at special permit. And through the, through the site plan process, they'll have a chance to look at it again and.
Yeah. So we went, we went through the whole.
How many?
And a groundwater study we did.
How much of these trees are you taking down? Are you going to leave the one, one oh five?
Yes, we're leaving one oh five. We're leaving, actually, you can see this here. We're leaving this whole section in here. We're leaving here, leaving here. So basically leaving, we're clearing here and out for here, all the rest of this.
The new building, John, is really over here. So there's a low area here that's.
They're going to leave that? Okay.
This is it. All the, this all stays.
So there's no outlet onto one oh five?
No.
So all the traffic is going to be coming out onto Main Road.
It's going through the existing curb.
Like it does now, yeah.
You're not allowed to have a curb.
Yeah, one oh five. No, you can't. That's why this guy, I don't know why this guy ever talks that he has a five hundred foot on one oh five.
Who's that?
Just the corner.
Well, his property is five hundred foot.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know. You can't do anything with it.
There are some pre-existing property owners when one oh five was created that, that did have some sort of a agreement, but I don't know about that specific one. A question for the board, because people did come out last time, would you want the public hearing to be a night meeting or a day meeting? That puts us into May. But we'll, the scheduling of the public hearing will be this coming Tuesday. We'll put it on, so.
Sounds like a plan. We good? Good? All right. Thank you. Madam Fire Department and Ray Coyne, come on up.
And Ray Coyne?
And Laura. Is Laura coming too to this or?
I can get her.
Do we need her or?
She does the res. I was all.
Okay, no, we don't need her either for that. All right.
Thank you.
So.
Take it easy.
Hey, Ray. Good morning.
Good morning.
That's something they're doing now?
And it says that they're willing to use ninety-five percent of New York State grown products available, if possible.
All right, so we had some problems with your last time and I wanted to, John.
He told me, I guess, and I, I thought, and supervisor that Ray did it. You guys dug a hole in the middle of the field and when you guys left, you didn't put it back with the big mound.
It was a giant.
Now, I spoke to one of the commissioners and he says, yeah, I'll take care of it, but now, that Ray took care of it.
We did it.
We didn't? No. So let's.
Sorry.
Let's talk about, because the, I think there's a problem with even that weekend doing it.
Yeah, that we have something going on that particular weekend. I think it's a tournament. So that presents a problem within itself because of all the traffic that comes in there and in the parking lot. So what's the weekend again? You guys have that down?
May twenty-one.
Okay.
May twenty-first.
I mean, how many people do you guys have over, because I wasn't there when we did it.
Generally, maybe a hundred people.
Okay.
It's not going to work on May twenty-first then while we have a tournament.
We didn't use any locks.
Yeah, you parked on the, past offensive port, on Line Road.
Yes.
They park on Line Road. Now, that is in their fire district. It is in their fire district.
Okay.
So, but they, they don't use our parking lot. They park on Line Road.
Did you have problems last year?
When I, when I did the research, there's nothing documented, so I don't want to bring anybody up. We did have some problems with some of the fire departments coexisting with our tournament groups. But nothing was mentioned on records. I don't want to say anything like that. But I think the biggest problem was the cleanup, everything like that. So usually with groups that do that, we don't allow them back. But obviously, you're a fire department, so a little bit different. But that's the first time ever. And the burn was huge. You could see it from the road.
Yeah, we're not letting you do that again.
No.
And we're not, the other thing is we understand that there might have been alcohol. We don't really allow alcohol in the park. So if we, if we give you an approval, there's not going to be any alcohol at all, period. And there's not going to be any digging up of the woods or anything. I, I mean, I have to say, the left did a mess.
What, what if that, what if that is?
And if you weren't a fire department, we wouldn't have even, you wouldn't, we wouldn't be even considering this.
I personally, it's on the assumption that the show was taken care of enough.
They called a tournament.
Is that what this is? It's a training.
It's a training event.
It's a training.
Brush trucks and stuff like that?
Yes. But they call it a tournament. It's not really a tournament. It's a training exercise for their brush trucks, for the new guys and the older guys to brush up on, to drive in these things. And they're tough to drive in the woods. So you have to have practice.
Yeah, I mean, the, the other fire departments do it, you know, Riverhead does it and we really don't have a problem with anybody. So it was just, I think that the biggest thing that stood out was the burn because we do use those multipurpose fields. We put different groups on it. So really put us in a tough position.
That was the only thing that I heard.
I think, no problem. Well, we took care of it. So I mean, you think that we can have it the same weekend?
Yeah, I'm going to go double check one more time. If you want to give me a contact information, I'll just go through you guys if you want and just let you know. If you guys are not using the parking lot, you're not using that area, then that's fine. As long as you stay on that side, so. I think one of the fire departments, one time, they used the parking lot. It was just a, too many people in one spot and it doesn't work out.
Strategically lined off an area of parking on the field so that we didn't have anybody parking in the field.
Okay. Okay, and if that's the case, then yeah, let me just double check. If it's a large tournament, then I have to talk to the board about it because we get a lot of people in some of these girls' fast pitch tournaments, but I'll double check today.
And then wait till you get back to the fire out before you have a beer. Okay? That's it. No, not there.
So we have to figure out whether, what the tournament is before we can approve, I mean, it would be better on a different date. Can you do it later, like fall or when we're not, or summer? I guess summer would be.
Anytime in the summer, anytime starting really from May through August.
Well, first let's see if it can coexist, only because you want this training before the hot summer can do it.
So May twenty-first is a Sunday, right?
But baseball's on the other side.
It is.
So you are separated.
I think there was, the last few years, we had, they had something going on in conjunction with us and we didn't affect one another.
Okay, yeah, it's the twenty-first is a Sunday, so that's usually easier with the tournament. Saturday is the day where everybody's there. Sunday, the tournament kind of weans down.
Following is Memorial Day weekend, correct?
Yeah, that, that we have booked out with a big tournament, so.
But this is not Memorial Day.
No, this is not. I know we have a tournament. I don't, I just want to make sure it's not the huge tournament that we usually have over there. If it's not, and especially that's a Sunday, then yeah, we can coexist.
All right, so let us know. So we're going to, basically the resolution's going to say no alcohol. You're not allowed to dig up anything.
The week before.
You received, received it and, you know, we're going to have to wait to see whether it's a big tournament or not.
I'm actually scheduled to be up there that weekend anyway, so I'll make sure things kosher.
Okay.
Because they use the park, we have the mud racing, the mud.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, they, that, that, they ruin, they ruin the field over there.
They left the best two. They, they would not be invited back on there.
That was what you, north of the, the roadway.
Yep.
But you're not taking down any trees or anything like that?
No, we, there is another pump that does it similar, but they use trees where we try to keep it on field so that we're not damaging trucks or any of the pump lines.
Right.
All right, so I guess, Ray, you're gonna let us know?
Yeah.
And then if it's okay, we'll put a resolution off for Tuesday with those conditions, the no alcohol, no digging, you know, digging up the field so that it has to be left in the same condition you've got it, so it may be better.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, sounds good, Ray, you're good?
I'm good, I'm good, yeah.
Well, sorry Seth for keeping you waiting.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Enjoy the rest of the day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right, can we, you know what, I've got, Larry, you wanna do, I wanna get, uh.
Am I still up or you want me to sit down?
Mike back, so Larry, come up, come up with the municipal garage stack. I know, but I wanna get Mike back to work too, so Mike, come on up.
That's okay.
He's sitting there for. All right, so.
Look at that, one of the reporters.
Municipal Garage?
Municipal Garage.
Mr. Curtis, how are you?
Mr. Curtis, Mr. Levy.
Hello.
Hi, hi, how are you? Sam.
Municipal Garage.
As you all got the threat letter from Riverhead Fire District about the pumps not working.
Am I supposed to take one and pass it?
The pumps, like the, the gas pumps work intermittently, in fact, the only pump that works on my car was caved off yesterday, so I had to play with the other one. So the fire district is complaining, the fire district is complaining, I'm complaining, the employees are complaining, the system is shot. So Larry and Mike went out, they got price quotes to do one island at a time. This guy Henrik is actually under county Nassau contract and we potentially researched it, that we could.
We have plenty. Oh, they're all different.
Nassau County, so that we could access Nassau County contract which ends in May, so we have to kinda move quickly. So there's several things that have to happen, what we're talking about now is updating one island.
Sorry, Sean.
And then next year budgeting for it to upgrade the other island. And then there's the added benefit that we have leaks in our manhole covers and that has to be upgraded. But for the moment, I think we should be upgrading the gas pumps, waiting maybe towards the end of the year to see if we have extra money, because this is not a budgeted for item. And if we have extra money at the end of the year, if we do the manholes, unless we can figure out how to do it all at once, which I don't know that we can. So Larry, Mike, give us a price and did I miss anything?
I got a short.
No. Um, okay, so for the, for the, um, gas boy system, or we'll follow up with the manhole covers, so the manhole covers, um, we have a quote on that. That we, we may be able to wait on a slight bit, um.
Which one are you using?
It's this one here, the one that, um.
Which Q, T two, two two six nine?
Which quotation number?
Um, two two zero two nine.
That's the manholes.
That's the manholes.
Thirty-one thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars.
Yep. Okay, so that, I mean, we've been kind of creeping along with that, um, has the, um, has it?
The problem with the manhole covers is every time it rains, there's a leak and water gets in the sump and the alarm goes off. Now, when the Suffolk County inspectors come out every summer, I have these alarms and it has to be cleaned out the first time it rains, it's back in there, the alarms are going off. Eventually, they're gonna find us, they haven't gotten to that point yet.
So that kinda needs to be fixed.
Yeah. We've been warned for the last three years.
So who is using, besides police?
Who's using it?
Who's using, I know the school district.
The entire town, the school district, the fire department.
Fire department. And the, uh.
Ambulance, all town departments.
The cat force do use it, that one?
Yes, all right.
So this, so the question.
Don't go down.
That's PD.
We didn't get to that, we didn't get to that, we're still on the sumps. So the sumps are something we should do, we'd, well, we have to do it, the question is when we do it. So let's talk about what it costs to upgrade the pumps that don't work anymore.
So on that, that is quote twenty-three eight oh eight, fifty thousand dollars. Yep, forty-eight, one oh three, um, and that, what that is, is we get the, um, we get the one island, the middle, the, the closest to the building, that island will be, uh, taken care of. That will have, uh, a new system on the actual pumps itself. This also gives us every single vehicle that we fuel and, uh, big equipment, correct me if I'm wrong, and, um, all of the apparatus, the, the, um, the rings and the little nanochips for each one so we can track who's getting the fuel. So this is everything that.
Replacing what we have now.
Yeah, and it's an upgraded system, so all the rings and modules that we have out there now in vehicles will be obsolete. This includes all new for over four hundred vehicles.
Oh, it does, yeah.
That's why we do one island now and one island.
Do we have to re-outfit the vehicles?
Every one of them, yes.
So what's that, what's the cost of that?
It's in this quarter, there's, all the parts for that are in this quarter.
Okay, but each, but the fire and the school district are gonna have to pay us to re-outfit their trucks.
About fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's the question that I had, is based on the user, users of the fuel and the consumption. You know, Riverhead is paying for all of this infrastructure improvement and I was wondering if there was anything in the IMA that required the other users of the pumps to chip in based on their percentage of consumption.
They pay a higher rate.
They pay a higher rate, yeah.
I know they do, but I don't know, I'd like to see the numbers.
But the higher rate is both.
The higher rate if it's covering their percentage of what the cost is for this, because we'll have to look into that next time that we sign an IMA with them, with the pumps.
We're going, we're going to increase when, cause they come up annually, I think, it should be coming up, we're going to increase the rate they pay to cover this.
Okay.
They're covering, they're covering their share, they have no choice.
Yeah.
If they didn't, if, if we didn't do this for them, they would have to do it for themselves.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what Bill, Bill's here for, once we finish all this, then he can figure it out and find out what's it's costing us, what's its cost is for a gallon of gasoline.
Oh, I get it, that's what I'm saying, I think we're in a good position.
And that's, we, we have to raise their rate up, we'll charge them what the cost of a gallon gasoline is to pay for this. So raise up that one, so I mean.
It was originally, um, like, that, that extra amount was for the upkeep of it, but it was, I, I guess it was not considered for upgrading, uh, what we're doing now.
I just wanna know.
So now that's going to be included into the new.
Right.
Bill's not here, right, so that's all I wanna know, I wanna know what the percentage of rate of all the users is.
And they pay for installing the stuff on their vehicles that have to be installed, we don't pay for that.
No, Sean's saying that they have to pay us back, so I don't think that's in their agreement.
No, 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 that's in their agreement, we're, what, what you want is what we're going to do. We, they pay more for gas because we're the host station and they, they pay for the upkeep. When we amend their agreement, they're going to pay for not only what they pay for now, the rings, the maintenance, but there's gonna be an increased cost to them because there's an increased cost to us.
Sure.
And that's gonna be figured out and that's gonna be put in their agreement.
We can't figure it out until we find out what the final cost is.
Yeah.
And then we can figure it out.
And honestly, they're gonna wind up paying part of that thirty-one thousand dollars for the manhole covers too.
Yes.
That's gotta get factored in on the fuel service.
Right, I can't imagine doing half a job anyway, so.
Hundred percent, and we should.
Both jobs are about eighty thousand for round figure numbers.
It's a lot.
We don't have, I'm sorry, do we have the money for that?
I said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right, so what do we do with that?
He's still.
There's money, there's money in these, is this the money, this is the amount he thinks we can take out of the accounts.
Yes.
So there's money in several of our accounts that, including the gasoline count for the police, um, grounds, buildings and grounds and seniors. So there's money in the accounts that we can take out to, to do this, we're going to have to do a budget transfer to pay for this.
This is a shared tax pay, uh, what Como wants us to do.
Right, we've been doing this for years.
Right, we do it for years, this is cheaper than for them putting their own pumps in, in the fire department and into the school district. So they are saving money by doing this and we did it without even doing any, uh, surveys, it didn't cost us any money to do surveys.
Oh, you did this.
We just did it, right?
You were the, the granddaddy of this.
Yeah, so I mean, we're, we're, we're saving money for the taxpayers.
All right, so I'm going to put a resolution, I don't think there's, there's about eighty thousand dollars here for both of these. When you add all this up, because we're not gonna rob every dime out of these, I mean, is it, does Bill think we can take that exact amount out of each one of these?
I think he, he says we can, but I mean, he's very, you know.
Well, that's more than we need.
Fifty thousand is electricity and he.
The question, well, the question becomes, you know, there's gonna be a budget transfer.
No, that's all.
We have to do something, do you wanna do, and the manholes have to be done, but do you wanna, and the gas pumps have to be done first, cause there isn't have manholes if you can't pump gas. So is it the board's desire to bite the bullet and do both now?
Well, I think we have to do it.
We've been talking about it for years.
Well, yeah, it's. If repairs on the pumps over the last couple of years, just to keep this stuff running, has been high. I brought overtime sheets, everything highlighted, this is just this week of every time I've gotten called in that the pumps were down. Last week we had a power outage.
Right.
No, it's not tonight. Last week when we had the power outage, they're telling us that we got a bad diode in one of the boards and we're having a low voltage problem that's causing these pumps to go down every day. They're going down all day long, we're constantly putting them back up.
All right, so is this a desire?
This alone is costly.
Well, don't forget, these pumps have been almost twenty years, they're outdated.
Just to put things in perspective, a couple of years ago, um.
And I'm not great, you know, but it's ridiculous.
You're right, yeah, very true.
They call in every single night.
Just to put the, the cost into perspective, a couple of years ago, uh, from what was told to me, is they got some quotes on it and it was like.
Hundred thousand.
I think it was closer to two hundred thousand, yeah. And, and so these numbers have, because I guess with technology it became a little bit cheaper, um, it has come down. And then to repotrofit the second island will be way cheaper because we have all of the. Yeah, it's just doing the island, we don't have to buy anything for any of the vehicles, it's just the island, so.
And we'll buy new pumps then, next year.
Yes.
We're not buying new pumps this year, we'll buy the new pumps next year.
And I have that price here too.
And one of the reasons, we've, we've calibrated our pumps, but we're still.
They're useless.
Our fuel readings are still not spot on where they should be, so there's, the twenty-year-old pumps, they've had it, but we can't, at this point, we're gonna have to deal with the leakage that we have in terms of number, not gasoline. That's a poor choice of words. We're going to have to deal with the fact that we can't get the pumps calibrated to get this done and then next year we'll budget to do the upgrade and buy the new pumps, so hopefully Henrik will have the best.
That's a system we have.
And they said, they said he will.
Between myself, Laurie and Bill, trying to figure out where these loss of gallons are and it's just no matter how we figure it, it's not coming up right.
Right.
Just last week, we powered down the whole system so she can do gas boy. My meter readings say we pumped a thousand gallons, VMS is showing seven hundred.
So.
That's not good.
No.
Right.
It's gotta match.
But your, your readings, so your readings are probably right, because.
Right, you're taking. Right off the pump.
Right, and you're sticking with ten.
And the VMS is saying seven hundred, so it's three hundred gallons that we're not charging somebody, are we losing it?
Or, right, or, right, we're just not picking up.
So what the guy said, Henrik said that to.
Accurate.
We've calibrated.
They work out, so we're sort of, it's gotta come up together.
So before these do system, he wants gas boy to go.
Somewhere is losing. I just wish you had the money to do both islands, but you can't really do both.
Right.
And if we could jump off the Nassau County's stuff.
Yes, yep.
It's good, that's saving us money.
All right, now, can Bill do a resolution transfer to do both of these and then we'll budget the other one, you have to do the other pump next year anyway, cause you need them. You're not gonna get all the cars retrofitted at the same time, so you're gonna have to have the old system.
We have to do one or two.
Right, okay. Do the resolution, thank you. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want those copies?
Thanks, Mike.
Jill, what do you got next?
Keep up the good work.
Do you want my keys so you can pump them out of, right?
Mike?
Count to crest, that's quick, right?
Thanks, Mike.
We had choice words for it. Ray, count to crest.
I'm not taking my hat off.
Let's go fishing.
Mine's three o'clock. Yeah, they, uh, they contacted me again and they'd like to come back, the fishing boat and.
Count to crest?
Yep.
Love it.
So I just wanna make sure I have permission, I asked the town attorney to pull up the, uh, agreement again. We charged fifteen hundred last year, I believe.
Is that the one that was down at South Jamesport?
Yeah.
Is what the boat had? I had a few complaints, but mostly neighbors about the garbage and stuff like that.
Yeah, and we addressed it with them, um, they're actually really good, they've, everything we ask them to do, they do. And we've asked them to move a couple of times, all different things, and they're actually very good with the garbage.
We're not losing any money with fifteen hundred.
No, it's all, it's all profit for us, so, yeah.
We don't do nothing.
We don't do anything for them, they just dock it and we mark out parking spots for them.
They use the pump, huh?
No, they can't, they have to go somewhere else to do that, I don't know why it's illegal for some reason, they don't, they do their own pump out.
Maybe commercial can be legal, I don't know.
I know. I took my youngest son on, it was a great trip, I recommend, um, for you. It really was a good time, plenty of fish, they, they were first class.
I know, it would make it a good trip. So if it's okay, it'll go up on this Tuesday.
You're only here for a month anyway, right?
They're just here for the month, yeah, then they go over the porch, yeah. What do I have next?
All right, live on twenty-five, um.
Well, he's got playground equipment.
I got two more, I'm, I'm quick.
Oh, God.
What's the other?
I checked it, I was moving so quickly.
Oh, the playground, yeah.
Oh, yeah, playground equipment and resolutions.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, I think I mentioned this to the board, one of the companies, uh, sent the playground equipment by mistake, we never ordered it from them, um, they.
They sent it, go and sell it?
They sent it, we were in, we was talking to them and we found another company that beat their price, we went with the other company, but this original company shipped it anyway. And we didn't know for a little bit because we thought it was the other company, because the playgrounds were similar. So it's been sitting there for a couple of years in our yard and we couldn't get in touch with this company, we're going back and forth.
Should've went out of business, we gotta.
No, no, they're still there, I wouldn't put it up just in case, uh, so we, I finally got in touch with them about four or five months ago and they wanted, originally it was nineteen thousand. So I said, either you pick it up or give me a better price, they gave twelve thousand.
Pick it up or give you a better price?
Uh, yeah, pick up the equipment, because we're not doing anything, you put it in our yard.
Now, did you accept twelve thousand?
No, I negotiated down to five, they asked for seven, I said sixty-five hundred and that's where we're at. And if the board's okay with it, as long as the money's there, sixty-five hundred for a nineteen thousand dollar playground.
Yeah, that's good.
Three years old, probably all rust in the paint.
Yeah, no, we have it all covered up, yeah. We put it away nicely.
Do you have the money? Where's it going?
There's money there, but, um, you know, that little thing with the, uh, the conversation, either way, if I get permission, once the money's there, then I'll go ahead and move forward. I just don't wanna move forward without the permission.
You got one to replace the one that you ordered that one originally for, where is this one?
The, the spy, we put a spot where the picnic area is for a smaller playground, uh, down at Stotski, that's the spot.
Actually, it should be down there by the picnic area, but that's where the kids are.
The advisory committee's been asking for that. Yeah, yeah, and I, I did speak to advisory committee too, the chairman, and they, they were all for it.
Are these gonna be for the smaller kids, not the five in the boat?
Yeah, yeah, it's a small, it's a smaller playground, yes, yes.
Below five.
Correct, yeah.
Good job negotiating, and I tell you, the kids are real excited that the skate park is open again, even if it's only half. They can still get out there and there's still some ramps there, so skate park is open.
Yes, it is, they're actually keeping it clean.
It's impressive, uh.
Good negotiating.
Celtic question, it's in, should be already, yeah, the playground I'm not gonna do yet until I see Bill.
Count to crest.
Count to crest, what else we got?
Is that it for me?
I got one more thing?
No. Yeah, there was some resolutions with the salaries, annual salaries, you wanna know what those, where you came up with those? Did you make them up or is this?
No, 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 no. Alright, I'll tell you exactly what, who's the first one? The first one is Bethany Peters, she's actually our, our beach manager, uh, but I have her coming in, uh, this time of the year to help us in the office. We always have a clerk this time of the year, we pay the standard rate, another one fourteen dollars an hour, we do that with all the clerks. So she's just coming in for a couple of months to help us out.
Bethany Peters.
No, 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 I'm just giving you all of them. Next one is the archery guy, we got an archery instructor for the spring summer, that's standard.
Oh, but he's paid by the fees?
Yeah, he's paid by the fees.
Okay.
Who's this? This is Sarah Freeborn. This is something that's new, we gave her a bump to a new position. She's actually gonna help us out with Jim's position for now. She's gonna be our person in the field. Believe it or not, she's our par, top park attendant.
She's very good.
Are you gonna hire someone to replace her?
We'd like to, but I know about, you know, I have to wait a little bit, and plus, we're, March is, retired at the worst time of year, to be honest.
Because his salary could pay some of these new.
Well, he's dividing.
Well, we always have the money for the park attendants. But actually, I'm, yeah, that's, I know that, so, and plus, by doing this, you're saving a lot of money by going through with this for the meantime, until we get somebody in.
Okay, I like that idea, that's thinking using your noggin.
Uh, and this is how I got it. Basically, I just changed this, this always comes over on the seasonal one. We have a beach attendant slash senior park attendant. Um, Sarah's gonna be the senior park attendant, and then, uh, when Bethany goes in, she's gonna be the beach manager.
No, but where do these figures come from?
Yeah, this is off last year's, and the only thing as I, um, everything got increased by a certain percentage because of the minimum wage. So this just went up a certain percentage points, it's really, it's the same. What's that?
What percentage?
Last year, so they sixteen twenty-five last year, it started at the fifteen, uh, twenty-five, and then it goes down three percent from there. It is.
Three percent raises to these guys.
That's actually, we're actually under, we're actually the best in Suffolk County with our rates. We beat everybody in their rates. Not high or lower.
In the salaries, you beat everybody in the salaries.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we meet every quarter.
You beat everybody in the salaries.
They actually come to us.
Everybody else gets it, right. Two percent.
We've been doing three percent for eleven years now. It's the standard raise.
Two percent.
They're young kids.
Two percent?
I have never, ever, ever gone over my budget, ever, in eleven years I've been.
Two percent, two percent, is that what we're thinking, two percent?
And I gotta revamp all of them.
That's what you're thinking.
I gotta revamp.
I'm thinking two percent. Jody's thinking two percent. What are you thinking, John?
Two.
Two, there you go.
Ten. That was forty.
Alright, so move that to two percent.
Well, you know, in January, you guys agreed to the three, and so half the sal, half the people that are working now are on the three.
You made us do it three in January?
I've been doing three for eleven years now, I have. Yeah.
Yeah, you sleep at the sweet.
I come in every time and discuss it with you.
Wait, wait, hold on, no.
Know that he does that.
What does the level seven?
This is a very, very good system.
What's a level seven do?
It doesn't cost the whole.
Basically, what it is, is every time, this is the system, the system is, I created the system so nobody gets favoritism.
John, can we?
You have to start at level one, or level two, that's the limit. Levels every year that you get a positive evaluation and you come back, you go to another level.
So if you're here for six years.
Seven years, then you go down to seven, level seven, yeah.
But you know, you know something?
But you're not gonna go around a portion.
No, this, this is three, this is nothing.
You know what the problem, you know what the problem?
You go down to two percent, you're gonna screw up my whole system.
You know what the problem is?
And how many hours they work.
They get more than people that are in dangerous jobs. That's what the problem is.
What do you mean? You know the minimum wage is ten now? They've moved the minimum wage up to ten, ten dollars an hour. So where, where, most of our jobs are at minimum wage, and they go down the scale three percent. That one, that's a high end position, you're talking.
Nineteen fifty.
Can you do this, Ray? Can you do a middle column, show them what the two thousand sixteen pay was, and then also do a separate column at the end, saying how many hours each one of those positions were?
I have the spreadsheet, I can send it to you in two minutes. Did you guys see it every single year you guys see it, every single year?
So level one, level two, level eight.
Yeah, I know we do.
So, I wanna see just on that paper.
Alright, I'll do it again.
I don't need to see the spreadsheets, I just wanna see it on that paper.
Alright, what did we agree to?
I'll agree to whatever you guys want, but, you know, it's just a big.
Yeah, you can't, we can't, no.
Just keep in mind, this is the high, high end position, they gotta qualify for this. These guys have college degrees and everything, so.
But they're the same people that are coming back year after year, right?
Yeah, but they still have to qualify for the job.
Right.
Don't forget, Jim Janisack was making, what, fifty dollars an hour on his full time? I'm paying somebody to do the same thing seventeen dollars an hour.
What?
I'm saving tons of money here.
I know, but we have to take Drew now.
Alright.
No, I, I, I.
Alright, I don't mind doing it, I just.
Because Drew's got two projects going on right now, and one of his engineers is.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Thank you, right.
I don't even know where we landed, do you guys know where you landed?
Do that, we'll.
I know what happened.
I want a spreadsheet showing what the salaries were for two thousand sixteen, and then I want the total number of hours that we have on some of that level one, level two, level three.
Drew, you coming up? Drew, come on up.
He looks like he's getting a little high blood pressure, his red cheeks.
Well, yeah, just a little. They yank and they take and they tickle.
That's a matter.
Oh.
We done.
Nice. That's enough to stress anybody out.
Nice, this is a great day.
Okay, so annual contracts, um, tell us what we wanna, not what we wanna hear, but, um.
So, the issue as I understand it, was award three, item one twelve, which is, um, topsoil.
I think, I think the question was, Drew, is that when we put out a bid for RCA, and we put out a bid for, we put out a bid for excavation, we put out a bid for RCA, we put out a bid for asphalt, that. Are you comparing line by line to each bidder when they come in to say, okay?
No, that's why there's a total here. That's why there's totals for each award. So a contractor wins an award, they don't necessarily win a line item, they win the average of the line items. So, for instance, um, same award, award three, Corzini's price are actually, I'm looking at three, maybe it's four. I know Corzini's, here it is, it's four. Corzini wins the award for parking lot and driveway work by a thousand dollars.
For the overall. Oh, for overall.
Okay, so.
Right, but his, his asphalt prices are actually higher than Rose.
Yeah.
Yeah, but other prices are lower.
But all.
But that's the problem that I'm having, because.
But you're bidding, but he's bidding it as.
A package.
A package, yes.
Because you're not gonna call Rosemar in to do the excavation, and then you're gonna call Corzini in to do the RCA, and then call Rosemar in to give the.
Right, right.
So you've always done it this way, I'm okay with it.
Ten years.
So I go, we go with a package, that's the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, but, but this is the thing that I have a concern about, is that the rec trail was, we, under the old contract, we were paying eighty-five dollars a, a yard for the, or no, ninety dollars a yard. Ninety dollars a yard to Rosemar, under the old contract, for the rec trail. Now, the new contract for Corzini is ninety-five dollars a yard. So it's gonna cost us fifteen thousand dollars more to use Corzini under the new contract.
Well, wait, what do we get?
Hold on, let me finish. It's gonna cost us fifteen thousand dollars more to use Corzini to do the rec trail than it would be if we sign the contract with Rosemar today.
Can I just ask you one question?
We have to sign the contract with Rosemar before April nineteenth.
Well, for this, what are we getting from Co- Corzini, Corzini?
The excavation, RCA, and asphalt.
So you're just taking three things out of here. They're probably the high stuff that he's charging.
Well, it's just gonna cost us fifteen thousand dollars more under the new contract for the rec trail.
But you can't. It could, it could, it could cost us a half a million dollars more if we don't get the contracts back from the state of New York. I just found out that we didn't get the contracts back from the state of New York. It's the state of the county, for the, the lights that we put up downtown.
Okay, but we.
We can't, no, 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 okay, we can't do this. We have to get the contracts so we can take a revenue stream and bill against the revenue stream. We don't have the contracts yet. So we can't, so it could be next year, that by the time the state and the county gives us the contracts, I don't know, I mean.
Senator Lavelle is working to get the contract, at least for the hundred and fifty thousand, 'cause that's the Dazney, and once we get that contract, that's the match for the two hundred thousand from the county, and. I think that we need to get started sooner than later, so.
And we have signed contracts, we'll get started, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know if we can pick and choose.
That has nothing to do with this.
This one, this one is, you give it to one company, if you're saving money overall, I think we're doing better.
But we're not. Anyway.
This is the way we've always, I don't say, that's not a good way. This is, is this the way, from your engineering expertise, expert perspective, that we should be bidding this contract?
Yeah, 'cause we never really have any problems. And if there's a, if there's a complainer, or there's an issue, the next year we take care of it.
I know, but, you know what, it's, when you're bidding contracts, if there's a line item that you can put in there that's gonna cost you less for that line item, like the excavation, and then you can pump up the asphalt price, and then it's still levels out. As long as there's no change orders, Drew, if there's constant change orders on these contracts for the line items, then that's a problem.
There aren't, there are not.
But if you had a lineup, you're not gonna get you, you, anything done, 'cause you have to keep going with the company.
Right, right.
I get it, I agree with it going out as, to bid as a package, I'm just saying that.
Corzini does the, does the RCA, and then you bring Rosemar to do the top, so they're not gonna guarantee their top, so they can do the base.
That's true, too.
It's a package.
Yeah.
That's why we go with awards.
Right, is the way you're comfortable doing it, from an engineering perspective?
Yeah, we.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
You're good with it. Jody, you're not good with it?
I want my rec trail bill.
I know, you know. We do all do. Hubbard, you okay with it?
I'm debating it.
Um, debating it?
Yeah. I'm not sure that it always does save money going that way. I, I know what you're saying.
But you're not gonna always save, we're not saving money on, on the bicycle bit.
But we have to rebid the whole day.
Right, absolutely.
But the overall picture is we're gonna save money.
Well, not necessarily.
We have bigger projects, we have bigger projects to be done that will save us the money.
Not necessarily, John.
The problem is that we would have to rebid the entire thing.
Not necessarily. I understand that.
And that would mean no asphalt, no nothing until.
Right.
Well, we can extend the whole contract.
And, and it is a matter of coordination also, because you don't wanna pour asphalt on top of somebody else's compaction grade.
You only extended it if there's a provision in the contract, a one-year extension.
There is. Oh, it doesn't all, no, it says we're allowed to extend it as, as much as we want.
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
That doesn't seem.
Can we bid out?
The town, the town attorney, we do?
Can we bid out each project?
What do you mean, sure.
That takes forever, John.
Sure.
And it costs a lot of money.
Yeah, well, that's what you want. You want yours to be the cheapest. That's what you want, though.
Yep, no, no, I think that the package deal makes sense for the things that should be packaged, like excavation, RCA, and asphalt. When it comes to individual line items that are an individual service, that I think that those should be bid out individually.
How do other municipalities do it?
Packages, awards.
Right, I'm comfortable with the way this.
The company's gotta know what they're responsible for.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with this.
Are you comfortable with it? I'm going with the three to two. Alright, you got three to two. Sometimes it's that way.
You want me to be at the award meeting, right?
Uh, yeah, you better show up, just for that, alright.
Okay.
Okay.
And like you said, we can always extend the contract if we did have to go back out to bed.
Live on twenty five, come on up, guys, I apologize.
And the older contract is cheaper than the new contracts. We can extend it. We can extend the contract.
No more coffee, Drew. Look a little stressed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How y'all? Good morning. How y'all doing?
Good morning, yeah. Good, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, hello. How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, guys.
Cause I have an eight thirty minute.
And then mom, I'm so used to this.
Alright, live on twenty five, Jill, are you coming up, or you're just gonna be in?
Hey, Bob.
I think finally did update, it must never have updated. I think it's a little brown. This thing that's. What are we doing?
We're gonna take shape?
Yeah, yeah, a little, a little bit of all of us. Um, well, first off, I wanna thank you guys for last year, and, and your tremendous support between the town board.
You kidding me?
The town in general, and also the, uh, the chamber helped, uh, make this a huge success. Uh, this year, we kinda wanted to talk about a few minor changes that we have going on, um, answer any questions you may have, and also ask for your support in one minor change to, um, something in regards to insurance, and Dan will assist us with what our request is. Pretty much last year, we had an issue. Uh, an example is, we had an artist that wanted to come and do a temporary mural down on Conic Avenue. Uh, they were gonna do a canvas mural right on Conic Avenue and paint throughout the event, so give people something to take a look at, um, and kinda an interactive art exhibit. Uh, we ran into an issue, a lot of these artists, uh, don't necessarily have the, the insurance requirements that are put in place from the town, and so really, what we're requesting is that, um, certain vendors that we put in place, uh, that on the artistic side, that they get a variance for, um, some of the, their minimos required by the town. Uh, Dan, I don't know if you wanna talk about more specific stuff.
Sure, so, uh, verification and a reminder from last year, town board requires a policy limit regarding craft and food at, uh, one million dollars per occurrence, two million in the aggregate for that classification. Alcohol vendors are double, it's two million per occurrence, two million in the aggregate. All of the license agreements require that insurance provision and compliance with that provision. So, the request now is for those folks who are not selling anything, not by way of craft, food, or alcohol, such that they're not actually going to earn any income, which would of course pay for an insurance premium. What is Dan trying to shoot down now?
Oh, he likes it.
He's with us.
Yeah.
Oh, Dan.
On our side today.
Dan, you're doing a great job.
Wow.
And I love the new beard design, too.
The problem I'm having with that is that, uh, if you, if you have a, a stilt walker, you want him to have a million dollars.
No, we're not doing that.
He, they have insurance, we're talking more like, um, you know, let's say, someone brings an acoustic guitar player to sit in a cafe, you know. As long as they're on the state sidewalk, I'm good. We can keep them on sidewalks.
I'm sorry, Dan, you got.
I'm sorry I derailed you, Dan, where are we going? I derailed you. I got good news, I derailed you, I don't know. Well, congratulations on whatever you're getting us. We sold Epcal, I'm getting a check later today. Bank check or something? What?
I had, now you said something about a bank, about a waiver, that you're talking about.
Yeah, well, uh, Steve was using the term of art. So, in a nutshell, um, regarding those individuals participating, who are not vendors, i.e. not selling anything, not involving food, craft, or alcohol, is a request by BIDMA that the town waive those insurance provisions. But I, again, as I always tell you, the town of Riverhead currently has a self-retention policy of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per liability, and since by contract, the town is co-sponsor, provides insurance for BIDMA regarding this event as a co-sponsored event, we're on the hook doubly, so to speak, both for their liability potentially, as well as the town's.
It's not on your pension.
So that's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar insurance hit to the town taxpayer that obviously would have to be considered regarding their request.
What does Epcal do for the stilt walkers?
Then it's, um, let's run through the chamber there.
That's why we're asking, it's, it's.
So that's kinda where we run into some issues.
That's correct, and that's why. So you're talking about making stilt walkers carry what kind of insurance? Well, is there a, is there a proposal for a stilt walker?
No, they, the stilt walker carries the required insurance.[1541.51] No, the stilt walker carries the required insurance.
Okay.
As any kind of performer, it's...
We're talking about a canvas painter that's painting, that's just there for observation, nothing more than people can watch them paint.
Or a face painter. Actually, Diane, you have more information on this exact aspect, right?
Um, well, when we're looking at like bringing in a face painter where we're potentially hiring them, or someone's bringing them in to be part of the kids' zone, they're volunteering, whatever the case may be, just that, you know, we're not asking them to provide liability insurance.
Do you just charge a face painter to have a million dollar policy?
Currently.
That's what we ran into.
Right, that's why they're coming before you, councilman. They're asking if the town would...
Halloween Fest was the same way.
Well, I think you have to use...
Did we do that?
I think we have to use some common sense.
Well, we didn't.
We didn't have them participate, so we just...
Last year during Live on twenty-five, we had a temporary guy who was gonna paint on a canvas, and we couldn't do that because we asked for insurance.
There's a certain amount of inherent risk in anything we do downtown.
Right.
I, unless the acoustic guitar guy flips out and starts swinging his guitar, or the face painter starts throwing paint at people in a fit of rage, I just don't... I, I, we're always taking some risk.
Right.
Otherwise, life is no fun.
And we're always on...
And Live on twenty-five would be no fun.
You can wait where you want to wait.
And they can sue anybody, can sue us at any time.
Right, but at least we would have a policy that would be afforded.
I remember we had a contractor, the guy got hurt. He didn't sue the contractor, he sued us.
Does, um, do all these people that are participating in these events, do they sign indemnification agreements?
Yes.
Okay. So then we're good.
And that's the second thing. So I would still require that they execute whole homeless indemnification provisions.
Perfect. Great, so I would just make sure that we have a list of the vendors and make sure you have their certificates for everybody.
Yes, and as a further backup, I've asked Diane to avoid those folks, which is a proposal on a case-by-case basis. We can evaluate them, and then if we think there's a potential, we'll come back and say, in this case, I'm recommending full insurance.
But you know something?
Oh, no, 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 absolutely not.
We'd have people sue us that they say they trip on the sidewalk.
I'd be more worried about that.
Instead of looking down and seeing where they're walking. So I mean, you know, we can be sued for anything. I, I think there's...
As long as we have the indemnification and the whole harmless and all the participants.
You have to use common sense. Face painter, I can't see.
Turn the light on, Larry. Turn the red light on. Larry, turn the light on.
He's gonna be our director.
The red light's not working.
It's starting Tuesday. Larry's our director.
Yeah. Apparently, the red light means...
He's running the cameras.
Yes. Yellow, they can hear us.
We even built a booth for him back there.
Yellow, he said they can hear us. So as long as we get a list of the participants and we have old, harmless, and indemnification on every single one of those participants that don't have the insurance, I'm okay with it.
And, and just to add to, I mean, where this kind of came up also too is in the farmer's market, where I had a couple of young teenagers from the town who play guitar, where I want to bring them into the farmer's market. But again, you know, we are talking about Live on twenty-five, but it goes back to that, that if I want to just bring someone into the market to kind of add to the flavor of it, currently, they would be required to carry that liability, which is not realistic.
If Bob's gonna have a million dollars.
The only thing is, we already counted in our building, right? Whoever came from a third party, who's private owner, who's entitled to have insurance. So that's a little different. We need to have permission in that, so.
Which I would be fine with. I just, you know.
I see Warren McKnight sitting down in front of the pool playing his little banjo. I'm sure he's gonna...
We have to, there has to be something in the lease that allows us to bring people into the farmer's market, so then that would cover the...
And Nick McKnight's...
We take a look at that.
Oh, McKnight's played there before.
I love Warren McKnight. He's great.
All right, so we're gonna go with the indemnification, that kind of thing, and hope for a great year with no rain.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Except when the water district comes, we want it to rain.
Do you want to talk about some other quick minor tweaks to it?
What else?
Yes.
Okay, so, well, first off, I'd like to thank Riverhead Cap. We're gonna continue our partnership with them. They've done some, about ninety-five different people that have been trained for tip certification, half of which were from Alive on Twenty-five last year. They've offered to graciously offer that again to Penn participants, and that's to go in line with the requirements as per the alcohol policy. So we're doing that again this year. The car show.
I hope I can take it this year.
Tip certification?
Yes.
All right, I'll hold you to that.
I'll go.
Be the one that tests them. I was gonna say, I'm gonna be the one to see if they're really trained.
Yeah.
Alive on twenty-five has really gone above and beyond to not only comply with alcohol policy, but go even further, to take further precautions, and they really have done well with the cap, so I thank them so much, the town board.
And we thank Riverhead Cap for the reciprocal relationship with offering that free tips training, so. It is. That's what it's all about.
We're training his forty dollars per person, and through our grant, we're able to offer it to local vendors for free.
For free.
Okay, what else?
Uh, for this year, not knowing what's gonna be happening with construction on McDermott Avenue, we're gonna be looking to move the car show over to McConaughey Avenue. Some of our issues with the event in general was people like to be on Main Street, so last year, we had to make some last-minute adjustments to get people that were on McConaughey Avenue, whether it be vendors or even downtown Penn participants, up towards Main Street. So this year, one of the good things, McDermott, last year, the car show was able to pull people off of the main road, so we're looking to main that, put that over on McConaughey Avenue.
That's gonna help McConaughey Avenue a lot.
His voice is coming, right?
Yeah, Larry.
He's gotta stop talking.
But McDermott's downhill, and if you put a chair and you lean to the side, you go over, but the people are only in cars.
Yeah.
So it's very uncomfortable for those people.
Well, also put some in a good location, so like somebody...
That's true.
It's a change.
Again, that makes sense. We're not a flat surface.
In order to incorporate the car show, and that's one thing that separates us from other street festivals, is having the car show, and the people with the cars like to come and go as they please, so putting on McConaughey Avenue also gives them an out without interfering with the actual event.
Are we still doing something on Thursday nights for the car show, or is Joe, uh, Joe, Ray?
Uh, I gotta talk to Ray. I gotta talk to Ray, but I haven't heard anything otherwise, so we do have that proposed.
Are you extending Alive on Twenty-five further east to include Blue Duck and the aquarium and Hyatt and...
Um, Blue Duck, it stops pretty much right before Heidi Bearway.
Okay.
And the reason why we don't go any farther east than that is because it allows the flow of traffic to get to the south parking lot from the east. So the footprint will still be the same, but Blue Duck is a part of it. It stops right at the Salvation Army.
Yeah, because you have to use that...
Right to the end of the Salvation Army, where that parking lot is.
Uh, street for cars that come through Main Street. So you can't do it to the equator.
But you could do it one way, coming west, to get into that back parking lot, and then...
Let them, they get a great job, let them do it.
I agree. It worked well.
I know.
What's the, who's challenging me, because I'm the pull-up king of this? I did one.
Okay.
I got one.
Really?
So who's practicing to beat my one?
I wanna see that.
One pull-up?
We gotta get a pull-up bar and the supervisor's up there.
I'm fifty years old. You sure you can do one pull-up?
By wait, now I can.
Tell them how hard it is to do one pull-up.
It's hard.
It's hard.
Oh, stop it.
This is a chin-up. This is a pull-up.
I know what a pull-up is.
This is Alive on Twenty-five.
That's where the contest takes...
Well, that was the army that came out with the, with the pull-up bar and the contest, so actually, I've spoken to them already, and they're gonna be out there again, hopefully every Thursday night, with the pull-ups and the Humvee that's got out.
So operationally, we're continuing to move full steam ahead. We're taking what we did last year again with minor tweaks, because last year was a success. We met with PD in regards to safety and security, and we're gonna be soon meeting with RVAC Fire Department and any other municipalities. Uh, there's two more things that we can discuss, and I'll throw it over to Diane, but in regards to the art stage and kids' zone, so I'll let you take it over.
So now, we had a successful year last year. We're looking, we, I think we did a very good job of balancing family activities with more adult activities, and we're really looking to kind of expand on that and make that better. So really working on developing a arts and cultural committee, which of course involves ESA and Arts. During the second, Alive on Twenty-five, and July twenty-seventh, the ESA Fringe Festival will be going on. We have Cindy Clifford here. She's on that committee as well, because we need to build the ESA Fringe Festival into the event.
What is the East End Fringe Festival? What is the East End Fringe?
It's ten nights with theater, sponsored in and around Vale Leveit, mostly at Vale Leveit, with the exception of the night that will be...
You're actually doing something at Vale Leveit?
Yeah.
They do a lot of things at Vale Leveit.
Stop it.
We've submitted scripts and productions of new plays. We have over eighty admissions, and we're screening them right now. We'll be announcing what shows are gonna be part of the Fringe Festival at the end of the night. And they're all new, unique playwrights. Some are established playwrights, some are new voices, and they're, none of the plays will ever have been produced before.
Cool.
And all the people who have, who are being accepted will be bringing their productions, so this is something that we're, you know, casting.
And what group are you part of? I've never heard of this. This is cool.
Well, it's the East End Fringe Festival. It's our inaugural year.
Oh, cool.
And the exception is that the...
Because you're on the fringe. I'm not on the fringe.
The fringe is, because we're actually calling it Theater on the Edge, and we have a map of Long Island, because it's, you know, the edge of Long Island. And for the, what we did was we created a category called Theater Express, and those submissions are plays that are seven minutes and under. So the night that we are at Alive on Twenty-five, we'll be doing a series of short plays that will be directed and cast locally in local towns.
Maybe I should audition.
Well, you know, send your...
Yeah, you could. They might need a clown there.
Send me your resume.
I play a supervisor on TV. How am I doing? Folks, how am I doing?
Well, look who you're sitting next to. Come.
Ah, yes. All right, what else we got?
So we're excited to be adding in some, some elements.
If you can't laugh at yourself, who can you laugh at? George Woodson's here.
Totally great. Patchogue Alive After Five has a art stage built into their event. We are looking to do the same thing into our event, so it's just one area that kind of has poetry, musicians, painters, and artists, and, you know. So again, really trying to bring a little bit more arts and culture into the event. Same thing with the children and family activities. So I, I've worked on building a new committee for that, which includes the Riverhead Recreation Department, Riverhead Library Children's Department, the YMCA, and also United Healthcare, who has a vested interest in community. So they'll be bringing some of their things into the event for free, just face painters, for example. YMCA is gonna bring back their rock wall and really look to build up those activities, and they'll decide, yet we just don't know whether it's gonna be a central zone or whether it'll be sprinkled throughout the event, so that committee will be working on that. So I'm excited to have all these different organizations in the planning at the onset this year.
Is that United Healthcare? Is that the guy on the corner of Main and Griffin?
Mm-hmm. Felix Sandino's joined the committee, so.
Excellent. Sounds like it's gonna be a great event.
And when's the first kickoff?
So it'll be the thirteenth of July, the twenty-seventh of July, August tenth, and August twenty-fourth, with a rain date of August thirty-first. So last year, Patchogue had already set their dates, and we worked with them to go opposite Thursdays, obviously. So last year, one of their rain date, luckily they didn't need to use it, but would have landed right on one of our dates. This year, we both share the same rain date of August thirty-first, so we're in a better position than last year.
Good.
We did, very good. A lot of people in for a first round, and a bunch of the days, we had heavy chance of thunder showers.
And it was hot. It was hot.
It was hot.
So maybe about ten degrees cooler would be better, or the, no rain would be...
It's okay. I actually got John to buy me a beer.
All right, good. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Good job, Steve.
Thank you.
Yes, excellent job.
Okay. I don't want to...
Get up, buddy. You're gonna go to Ronnie.
Oh, no, no, that's good.
Tucked in, protect us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thanks, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Thanks for everything you're doing and bringing into it. It's all good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, come on up. Sorry. Mr. Conklin, Mr. Collins. Sorry to keep you waiting.
It's okay. How you doing?
Hi, how you doing? What's up?
Water district improvements.
Water district improvements.
That probably improved the, improved the water.
That's what we're here today for, to ask your permission to do these, fast-track these three projects that we'd like to get done. One of them is some water main extensions that we'd like to do to increase our, our capacity of getting from our wellfields. We have a lot of bottlenecks, dead ends, that we like to try to...
Streamline it.
Streamline it so we can, so the pumps can run longer.
Water main extensions where, you said?
They're not extensions. They're going to be just improvements as far as dead ends, like one of them, there's, there's gonna be five-on-ones on Mill Road to connect the main from, by the trailer park on Mill Road to the, to Middle Road. All right, and then Young's Avenue to our pump station on Osborne Avenue, from Young's to Osborne, is another one. We're asking for bypass on Suffolk County Water Authorities. Interconnect on Conaughey Boulevard, so if we ever have any problems from South Jamesport Avenue East, we can, they can backfeed us, which currently they can't do right now. Plasky Street from...
Town Hall West.
Town Hall West to Plasky Street to come out and do that one.
Town Hall West to Plasky Street?
Town Hall, Town Hall West on Plasky Street.
To where?
Fifty-eight.
Oh.
To fifty-eight. There's no main in there, and that would help us, because we have three pumps at the main plant that...
That shut down.
That bottleneck there. We have high-pressure problems, and that, we hope we do that.
What's the cost?
Yeah, the last one's Pier Avenue, which is the interzone valve that maybe one day will get paid back for.
Pier and Sound.
How far down Pier Road?
Where's the end? Our high zone ends on Pier...
To the beach?
No, on Sound Avenue. Our high zone ends, and we want to put a, we want to put a valve in there to be able to bleed, or bleed down, bleed from our high to our low, to help us in the low zone area there. And eventually, with the agreement, if...
How are we doing with that agreement? Because they're gonna ask me, because I'm gonna wind up going to...
We, uh...
I'll see them shortly, I'm sure.
We, we've got it pretty much done.
So we gotta, have we been talking to them, the water authority?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just talking to ourselves, and I think, I think the draft is ready for you to come to.
Yeah, the draft's ready for you to look at, and the attorney to look at.
Okay.
The condo's up there.
Oh. So from like five years ago.
Two years ago, three years ago.
All right, so John had the question. What's this gonna cost?
The condo's up there. Wait a minute, I want to ask them for it.
Made so?
The condo is made so. Have we solved the problem up there?
What problem do we have up there?
Getting the water up there in the case of the fire.
That's on your list, so you sidebar it.
I think what the last means is that when we give them water, they have a lot of water, and they have a lot of pressure. I don't think they have the capacity to get it up to their level.
The internal plumbing and...
No, it's their problem.
Well, it, 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 their internal, their internal has a lot of deficiencies.
Sorry.
Their internal piping has a lot of deficiencies, and we don't know what it is. So I don't know if it's, if it's, you know, internal problems with them on some of the areas where they do their flow tests, if they're deficient or not. I don't know it's internal. I know what we give them. I know what we feed them.
But they, I mean, they tap into the main on Sound Avenue.
They tap into main off of Henry Lewis.
Of Henry Lewis.
It goes up through...
So once they tap, then that's it. It's them.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Internally, I don't know what they have as far as in their own internal main valves.
When we had that fire, we were able to provide, when we had the fire, we, I think the district made some adjustments, and that they know to call the district in cases like that. They know to roll the tanker truck. They're always rolling tanker truck, and they're always rolling the tanker truck all summer long, all the districts that have them, because that's the way it is. But we were able to supply them the water that they needed, from what I understand, for that big fire. There was not a water shortage there.
Well, I thought, since they had that fire report, and that the fire hydrants were going to be inspected every year for pressure, to make sure that they had pressure. This is what I, I thought we were doing.
It's through the fire marshal's office, and the fire marshal has private hydrants inspected, and he can...
And that is being done.
That's, that's...
That is being done.
So they're okay there?
They're, they're okay, but the problem, the, the, I mean, they're okay. It's, it's an area that if there's a fire, they know to call the water district, and we're going to make adjustments in what we're doing in the water district to boost pressure to that area. And you probably would say it would will upons.
We've talked to Jamesport Fire Department. We had, we had a class...
Tell them how many pumpers to have up, going up there.
They have, they have, they have a pre-plan, they have a policy. I'm on call to, to call. We can switch on extra pumps and move things around. Our pumps are on pressure.
That's the only way I figured they were gonna do it, is have pumpers...
But internally, I don't know. I mean, we could have all the water out on, on Henry Lewis Lane if they have a valve that's partially closed inside.
Right, you can give all the water you want.
Right.
If they don't have the piping inside...
Right.
It's not gonna get up there, unless they have pumpers to, to take it out and put it up there.
To bring us back to what you're here.
And I agree, that, that's the way you're doing it.
Do we have estimates on what?
Ah, is it the right way?
Is that what we're gonna talk about now?
Okay.
Yeah, that's project number one.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give you the cost, because we like to do them all in one.
Okay.
Project number two.
Project number two is the generators. Emergency backup generators. They want to install at Plasky Street and Plant Sixteen upon every town. And Plasky Street is the site of their communications, so if we lose power to Plasky Street, Mark's now operating blind, so...
Do we, we have to buy the generators?
We have, like, the buy and install.
Yeah, we have to buy them, so it's first the generators, then installation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That's Plasky Street, and then Edwards Avenue is, of course, where we put the perchlorate filter. Expensive resin in there, so we just want to put a generator up there so we never have to lose Plant Sixteen.
Okay.
And protects that resin a little bit more.
Is no possible way we can get grants and stuff for this stuff?
Well, doesn't it ever come up real high? When they talk about water quality grants, it's always sewer.
For the generators?
What's that?
Do we have to bid for generators?
Doing all three, each project.
We just wait. You fill them, you fill them in your wallet?
I don't throw, I don't throw that card out yet.
Okay, so generators?
Generators at Plant, uh, main plant and Plant Sixteen. And then the last project that we would like to, that we need tremendously, is a ground storage tank that we'd like to put at our existing wellfield Plant Seven, uh, Plant Fifteen up on Tuttles Lane.
I feel it in my wallet now.
It's a, it's a two-million gallon...
Just for that?
Two-million gallon ground storage tank on Tuttles Lane. We have the land there. We've done studies on three different types of tanks, a steel tank, a concrete tank, a glass-lined bolted tank. And over the lifespan and over the cost of maintaining the tank, the concrete tank seems to be the one that, that is the most popular and less maintenance on it over fifty, sixty-year, you know, lifespan. So we, we partially bury about seven, eight feet of it. It's about twenty-eight feet tall, so it wouldn't really have too much of a problem with the neighbors. We're setback anyway.
Concrete's cheap right now, too.
Hopefully, and...
They build that in place, or they prefab it and ship it?
They gotta form it and then they put it in place.
From the ground up, it'll be twenty-eight feet?
The walls are pannled.
No.
It's about twenty-some odd feet from the ground, if we can go about seven feet in the ground, we'll get to the soil boards and... Oh, the whole thing is twenty-eight?
The water authorities put one up in law.
Sounds like an ice cube.
They pour it right in place, so I think they said sixty percent of the...
Did they bid it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did they?
Yeah, they did. I think sixty percent of the, of a, of a concrete tank installation is done local, through local contractors with concrete lumber. I think it's over sixty percent.
Too bad we couldn't have bid it with the county, with the water authority, but they may not have gotten a good price. Did they get a good price or we don't know?
This is a lot to digest.
Yeah, well...
God, we, we just signed the yellow line, and we got...
So these, that's the three projects that we are here today to try to expedite.
How much money did you make?
I don't know. The bill won't tell me till April fourteenth. Last two years, nothing.
So can you...
Oh, you made money paying your debt back.
Didn't know I had it, but I guess I did, so it's good.
You owed two million dollars, my friend.
So I guess I made a million a year.
I think you netted last year, what, about a hundred and fifty or something like that, after you paid your debt back?
I'm gonna, if I made a million the first two years, I'm gonna make a million this year.
Okay. What's the total cost on this?
The total cost is five million dollars.
Five million?
Three point four million for the tank, million dolla, just shy of a million dollars for the water main, and just over a million dollars for the...
Can we bond them?
We have to, and that's what we're, that's the plan. So you're, Iseller's going to do a public hearing notice?
We've got resolutions for this town board meeting to, to do the, the bonding and public hearing.
Now, will your rates cover the, the payment of the bond and...
Is this permitted?
I mean, how are we gonna pay the bond back?
It would be done through, it would be through tax, tax rate.
We have to raise rates?
Yeah, I think it is. Yeah, I think it is.
Tax rate, tax rate.
Can you figure that out?
Do we have, we, we, we raise the rates for this, more or less?
Is there any other thing here?
Well, we anticipated it.
Um, it was part of what our overall plan was, I mean, is it just be one of the overall plan?
Of the ten million dollar plan? Of more than ten million dollars?
So, I, I would just wanna see from Bill what the bond indebtedness would be, what the payments would be, what the schedule is, and for the long term.
Yeah.
And then make sure that we're getting that revenue in to pay the bond indebtedness back, that we don't have to raise rates again.
Yeah.
Again, in forever?
Well, no, I mean, we're pretty up there, I mean, Suffolk County Water Authority is.
Well, I would still cheaper than some kind of water authority.
They're still cheaper than they are.
Yeah, but not by much.
Right about there.
Yeah.
She's a big red hand, a little bit under.
A little bit, not much, but, but they're going up five percent every year too, so, we're not going up, we, we, we did our for three years.
Not much.
They go five percent.
Okay, so you're gonna get a bond ready?
Yes, I'd like to, and expedite.
Do the resolution in the package, and Bill, um, put on for, uh, I would like to, Jody and I would like to sit out with Bill.
Always going. Fix it up to keep the house going, don't it?
We won't know this until after the A U D is done, but when the A U D is done, we wanna see what the debt service is gonna be, Jody and I wanna see what the debt service, well, the board wants to see, but we're specifically interested. How much money you made, and with the debt service, now, you're gonna make more money, because you pumped a lot of water last year, but we all, they'll work at an average, to see whether we can cover the debt service with the rates.
I mean, depending on what the deal says on April fourteenth, so we might be able to reduce that to five million.
Well, you should be paying for expenses.
I guess, I guess though, the bottom line is, we have to be honest, we, we have a list of projects that are before the town board, that have been approved by the town. It's gonna add a tremendous load on what.
We don't, we wanna run the district, and we have the funds.
You're, you're doing, you're doing the two hundred and forty thousand gallons a day increase in these projects that we have. That, compute that out over, over a month, in our, in our capacity, we don't have it, we, we, we don't have it anymore. Either, either projects are not gonna get approved, because we don't have the water to give to the projects, and they're, and they're massive, and that's not counting, you know, a, a summer load, or a hot summer for some of these projects. That could go, that two hundred and forty thousand gallons could go, a day could go up four, five times.
What this list is, is be, what we've seen.
What it is, is tight.
Well, this doesn't include anything under five hundred gallons a day. About five hundred gallons a day, I'm sorry. Um, there are other things out there that are, um, you know, planned, that are less than five hundred, this is just basically the, the largest ones that we've seen.
Are these the new things we're writing on, that you said?
These are the things that are proposed, yeah.
All these?
But if you have fifty of them that are five hundred gallons a day, then this is gonna go up significantly.
Yes, um.
Yeah, we haven't even included that, that's, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's come to a time where.
And it also doesn't include Cal, uh, the F Cal subdivision.
And, yeah, well, that's not gonna have, we're gonna be in good shape with that, 'cause lots of buildings and not the.
Okay.
Well, some of these are long, some of these are quite a few years out.
Lots of buildings, so, alright, I mean, if we're gonna operate a water district, we're gonna have fun with the water district.
Yes, you're right to that, but I gotta write the letter today for them to keep moving.
Yeah.
And that, that's, that's where I'm in a situation, the, the, the top three projects are, are forming at the bit to get a letter of water bill, uh, from the Water District to say that they can keep going with the Health Department approval. And between them three projects, you, you're looking at, you know, eighty thousand gallons a day.
What a project here.
Two point four million gallons a month.
Because we're a popular place to bank, and I'm trying to bring people to Main Street.
Okay.
But, you know, that, but even showing this, it's like, right now, we just did an analysis on the Villas to see if we could.
What is the Villas?
Page three of the Knowles.
Foxwoods? No, it's across the street from Page Three of the Knowles.
It's another, another.
Oh, yeah, right, 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 and.
So you drive in right inside.
The ones that were partially built.
Yeah, one of them's there, and the other, I think it's four buildings.
That's Page Three of the Knowles, the Villas is across the street, similar thing, a couple buildings, we did an analysis, and, yeah, we have no problem, we can give them water individually. But when you factor in everything.
Okay, but you're not even actually creating more capacity right now, you're just moving it more efficiently when we're done with the, um, USGS study, maybe that's when we're gonna start talking about adding capacity.
And that's where we back here asking for some well, test well program, and also some permanent wells, we're saying, we're just moving our water around, increasing capacity.
I can't wait to see the mapping, to see what that.
Then I just suggest something.
He's doing Northfield today, I think he's up there.
Like Jamesport Farm Brewery, I didn't know that was gonna affect you, because no one said that we're gonna add.
That's a bad one to pick, that's up near.
Fifty-five hundred, uh, gallons.
Well, that's in contention.
That's in contention right now.
Yeah, I mean, it takes a lot of water to make a gallon of beer.
To make beer, right.
Right, but, no one ever said that, oh, you know, you put this on, you're gonna add, add to a Water District output.
We do, we do, we do, that's, that's why we're.
No, that's what, we just got this now, I'm looking at it now.
No, but that's been going on for years, that's been going on for years, you know, you got, you got.
This is the first time I ever seen something like this.
No, no, well, I.
Great projects in here.
There's, there's a lot of big projects that, that are coming into the town.
Yeah, yeah, no, what I'm saying, that they should tell us.
Pre-existing that we don't even have.
How much water that they'll be using, and what's gonna do to our Water District when we build these projects, that's all I'm saying.
I mean, is, I agree with what you're saying, and I agree with if these, if any of these projects are gonna significantly put a demand on the Water District, that some infrastructure costs should be included.
Yes.
Other than just the pipe itself.
Well, they paid the water key money, that's what, that's part of what we use.
Key money, yes.
That's what I'm saying, we should think about raising it, before we think about raising, raising the key money.
We, and we do, we are, right.
We're not, we're not talking about raising rates, we, rates, we raise the rates where we think they needed to be, in anticipation, 'cause we think, we had this whole conversation, it was ten million dollars worth of improvements at the same time.
I know, but.
No, no, I, I agree, we did have a conversation, we're gonna improve it, I'm just saying that when they bring, like here, the Marriott Residence Hotel is gonna use twenty-five thousand estimated gallons a, a day.
And he'll pay.
That's a lot of water.
But he'll pay a key money fee, the, the, what we have to understand, as the governing body, that we have to keep moving and in, investing in the infrastructure that we, we're doing, and he pays a fee for that. He's given us the money to do a test well program, put a tank up, put main in or whatever, so I, I, we just have to keep moving along that road, and I think over the last years, we've stopped. And these projects have come in, and we haven't done anything, and they.
Spent a lot in two thousand eleven, and then.
And we had a lot of bad, you know, again, you've had chlorides, where, where you had a well, you put in for fourteen hundred gallons, it's doing five hundred gallons, you know, you, you've, so, it's, it's something that we have to keep on top of.
Right, that's what we have to do.
They do pay, we have to invest that money back.
I agree with you. We gotta keep on top of it.
Not pay that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Still there.
See, if I had that million dollars for the last two years too, these projects would be done.
Oh.
I don't print on these.
Alright, thank you.
So, alright, any questions?
With the resolution up, and we won't know that answer that both of us wanted to know, to take at the A U D.
He's working on that, he's a good fellow.
Is that why he's not here, he's working on the A U D?
No, he's in G F O A conference. Alright, is there, uh.
Now, Kelly.
Kelly, come on.
Kelly wants.
Kelly, we didn't even know why you were here, I thought you were just.
No, well, she's gonna, I, I, I put, I put something on everybody's desk, that she's gonna, uh, just.
Put something on your desk, where, today?
No, let's, so, what did I?
Oh, oh, about the, uh, about the.
Everyone, how are you?
Kelly, you talk, John, you run it, I gotta.
Okay, um, like you all sort of got in a invitation from John about our meet and greet, um, so on April twentieth, I have, did you guys come to our meet and greet last year?
Yes.
I think you did, yeah, so, um, on April twentieth, from three o'clock to five o'clock, we're having our third annual meet and greet. It's a big event, last year a hundred people attended, community leaders in Riverhead, and it's a great networking event, and then, um. Good, we do, um, a short presentation, and this year's important, because we do have new statistics, we did a, a prevention needs assessment survey in May two thousand sixteen in the school. Some good stuff, some bad stuff, we're gonna discuss it and see how, um, everyone else can get involved, so.
And I want you to turn around, look at the camera, and invite everybody who wants to come to this coalition meeting, and if they wanna join the coalition, they can.
Okay, well, it is, um, R S V P, because it's a limited amount of space, but, um.
Right.
To the camera.
For those.
And drinks will be served.
If you'd like to learn more about the Riverhead Community Coalition for a station for youth, we are having our third annual meet and greet on April twentieth, from three o'clock to five o'clock P M. However, uh, it is required that you must R S V P, and you can R S V P by calling the cap office at six three one seven two seven three seven two two.
There you go, thank you very much.
Yay.
Thank you, huh?
Alright.
Did a very good job.
Thank you. Hey. What else, you got resolutions?
Okay, so we're gonna close this, the work session?
Oh, we do resolutions, I believe.
Oh, resolutions, no.
We've got like fifty resolutions.
He's not here.
A whole hundred and sixty-three pages of resolutions.
Where is he? We got pages?
A hundred and sixty-three pages of resolutions, a hundred and sixty-four.
We're gonna take a break.
Take a break.
Fifty resolutions, let's go, we got executive session too, we got people waiting for us.
Who?
I gotta get that one too.
Who's waiting for us? We an hour before we get to executive session.
Take a break before going into executive.
Hey, we're ready.
I had to take a break. Alright.
That resolution number nothing.
W S one.
W S one.
Oh, W S one.
Okay.
Uh, budget adoption, this is, uh, for Georgik McGreen. Development fees regarding for the water main extension.
I guess, she gives the fees though.
Yep, this is, it's right on that page. Yeah. Um, two, capital project, pro healthcare, twenty-first century oncology, budget adoption, obviously to connect them to the sewer.
Yep. They, they already give the fee too.
Yeah.
I thought they already connected, but I don't know.
No, they have to, I was part of the problem.
Right, go ahead.
Point to temporary secretary to the Board of Assessment and Review, Jean Hogan, we good?
Yep.
Yeah.
Move agricultural, agricultural workahousing for Carl Gabrielson, which is for, we talked about that, we good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Accepts annual report and annual financial, financial report of the C D A for two thousand sixteen, I didn't even see this.
No.
Jill, did you see the annual financial report of the C D A?
It's right here.
What?
We'll read through it for Tuesday, right?
It's attached.
Yeah, we got it right here. Okay.
Hold on, I'm doing my Evelyn Wood, if you don't leave it.
It's a long report.
I'm gonna have to read it, because.
Good, there's, there's sixty-three, the hundred and sixty-three pages.
That's right.
Oops.
Sixty thousand.
Okay.
Are we, uh, did I miss one, authorize seat, e- au- execution of contract with Seat Climate Administrator?
That's the next one?
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
The R six. We do that every year.
Yeah, I have the contract, it's gonna come over today, isn't it?
Yeah, it's attached to the thing.
Yep. Yeah, and we did it.
Seven increases the hourly rate of detention attendance, well, we can finally have some people show up.
Yeah, I'm looking at a bed alone, I don't know.
That's what I'm doing.
Yep.
Okay.
Hmm, don't work. Yeah.
We try them.
Resolution nine, accepts resignation to detention attendance.
What?
Did you do eight?
I don't know, did I do eight?
Retirement of water treatment.
Accepts retirement of water treatment plant operator, no, Paul Bokey, yep, that's.
Yeah.
Oh, they, yeah, they always clean house with these things, people don't come in for a year.
Oh, yeah, more, uh.
Accepts resignation, a lot of attention, detention attendance.
Detention attend. Yeah, the, the quitting that we have hired.
Well, they, these people haven't responded in years to phone calls to come in, so.
Yeah, right, they've got a purge, right.
You gotta cut them out and try to get some new blood in there.
So we need more people.
Ten, yes.
It's all per diem anyway, you may.
Oh, we'll publish it, that's fifteen dollars an hour, Larry, can you make sure Meg publishes detention attendance, if we need them, at fifteen dollars an hour on the website? Accepts a resignation of bingo inspector, Judy Doll is looking for somebody else.
What?
And the, he came through us through the senior center, so hopefully he finds somebody else. Uh, eleven, points of principal clerk, um, Shannon Clifford, this is.
Engineering?
Yes, that's, yeah.
Engineering department to replace Margaret McKay.
That's the engineering department, yep.
Very good.
Reappoints provisional assistant water district superintendent, and we talked about this, for.
Approving. More hungry.
Appoints a water treatment plant operator trainee, um.
Yes, David Ferrante.
Oh, right, those are those interviews.
Yeah, the interviews, there was two of them.
Points of water district.
Yeah, Dave, Dave.
We good with these?
Yep.
Yeah.
Reappoint season, pump out both operators.
Who's doing it this year?
Nicholas May.
This was a little bit higher.
No, no, we're beyond that.
They raised these rates, yeah, they raised these rates, they were like eleven dollars an hour.
No, the next one, yeah, keep, keep up with the program, next, next one.
Yeah.
No, pop out.
Ratifies a transfer in account clerk type, this, this is Margaret McKay on the highway department. Seventeen extends bid contract for general hardware items, Griffin Hard.
No, you, you.
He didn't do that one.
You're not keeping up with this.
Keep going. I'm on resolution eighteen.
Me too.
Yeah.
That's the bid contract with Griffin Hardware, go to the next one.
Yep.
Awards bid contract for work clothes.
Yep.
Hey, I can fit in the cheaper pants now, look at that.
Holy Moses, those long contracts.
If they charge you more for anything over size forty-two, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it should.
They should bundle this together.
What's all these blank pages here?
Should bundle it as an attachment, that's just because it's an Excel spreadsheet, it was too wide.
Alright, public information, budget adjustment, this is for the D J booth, we got a next, five thousand dollars extra. That whole booth, by the way, was paid for with the exception of this five thousand, which actually came in extra, was paid for.
By, by cable.
By cable vision, we didn't, none of this stuff, this is all cable vision paid for, this is part of the contract.
Okay.
And these cameras here that can pick up.
Everything.
Yes.
Pretty good.
The five, I mean, the only thing we paid for.
So people are really able to see themselves on TV.
Okay, your idea of this is, it's gonna be live.
It could be.
Somebody, Larry said it was gonna be live.
Sort of.
It could be on the website if we chose to do that.
It'd probably be delayed, I mean, you could livestream it, it's probably be a lot, a lot of bother with that.
We could if we wanted to.
We like the ability to edit.
Not gonna be live.
It'll be closer than what it is now, it'll be closer to live than what it is now, if it happens within the next couple of days, rather than months, before you see a town board meeting or a work session.
If you don't want it live, you get all the crazies coming, yeah.[1550.21]
Well, it's still gonna be weekly.
Yeah, but.
Ah, all right, no more conversations. Come on. Authorizing removal of fixed asset records from the system. Twenty-one, you can answer that question yourself.
Family show, Casey and the Dudes.
Twenty-one, order calling public hearing regarding extension of Riverhead Sewer District to serve pro health.
Is your, I, I, wait a minute.
We talked about that?
Removal fixed asset records from system.
Yeah.
Well, there's a hand on here. I'm just curious what that's all about.
Basketball game, jigsaw, what?
I see a Glock.
Gosh, jigsaw.
Yeah.
Yeah. That little letter of my crack.
Pumsy little bit that were getting rid of a Glock. I just don't know. I know we traded.
All right, Larry, find out why that's probably.
We're gonna discard it. Probably don't work.
No, I think we traded the nine milliliters in for the forty color, but I just don't actually.
On dub, you have resolutions. You need to have your resolutions out. All right, resolution twenty, you need to find out about the, what they did with that Glock. I'm sure they sold it back. You have somebody that buys them.
Jill took that on too.
Yeah. Well, 'cause I couldn't have mine. So maybe I'll go upstairs.
No, no, no. We, we sell them, we sell them back. We get paid for them.
Yeah, they trade them in.
Trade them in. That's it. Trade them in. Twenty-one, order.
Shall we talk about this one?
I'm twenty-one. Are you on twenty-one?
Yeah, order.
Order calling public hearing regarding extension to the Riverhead Sewer District to serve pro health. Um, this is the one, this is the twenty-first century oncology, what they call.
Yes, this is PC Riches.
Yep.
Right. And they're paying to get hooked, they're paying all of this to hook into the sewer district. Cause they can't, they can't expand without being in the sewer district.
Okay. Okay.
That was, I mean, you know, we don't have to approve it, but it was always anticipated.
Oh, we want, no, we want them in.
It's medical offices, more payers into the sewer district to help beat down that debt.
Yeah.
No, we want them in the sewer district. Absolutely.
Authorizes twenty-two supervisor to execute license agreement with Celtic Quest Inc. We spoke about it though.
Yes, we just spoke about that today.
How you doing? Over there with that leg.
It's medicine time.
Yeah. All right, license Doc Marina, that's the.
Oh my goodness.
What does he charge a golf fisher from? Do you know?
I forget what it was, John. It, it wasn't terribly expensive. I, I wanna say eighty-five dollars a person, something like that.
Don't say.
It's only a month we're doing it for?
He only does it here out of a month, and I think he moves his main bases in Port Chaff.
Okay.
And he fishes out of the sound.
Okay.
Twenty-three extends bid contract for hauling and dry, uh, disposal of dry cake, sludge, and grit screen waste from the sewer district. Michael wants to extend the current contract. We can extend it. There's two extensions in it.
Oh, yeah.
You good with that?
Sledge cake.
Yeah.
Twenty-four extends professional service agreement with vehicle tracking solutions for automated vehicle location and monitoring for the Riverhead.
For the highway department.
Big brother watching.
There's a GPS, I guess, right?
Yes, yeah.
How's that coming?
It's good. Looks good.
Is that okay, that GPS?
Oh, yeah. It's fine.
Yeah? Okay.
We know what you're doing.
Twenty-five, authorized supervisor to execute a license agreement with Eastern Bays Company, Inc. to allow the installation of floating upweller systems, FLEPSI, in East Creek.
Yeah, it's something we always do, yeah.
Yep.
That's all right.
Is that going to, who's that contractor? Is that?
Is, is, is that the cops?
No.
No, that's, um, what's?
Actually Karen, right?
Karen, yeah, that's who that is. Yep, Riv, is it Riv? I think you're right.
Riverhead is.
Twenty-six, authorization to publish advertisement for the purchase of one used Algen street sweeper model broom Badger dual steer or equal for the town of Riverhead Highway Department. Is this a brand new one? This is a used one. You found one?
Or equal. There's no equal to that title.
Are you? That solves a problem. All right, well, we're bidding it. Twenty-seven, authorizes town clerk to publish and post the notice of public hearing to consider a proposed local law for an amendment of chapter two eighty-nine entitled Vehicles and Traffic and Parking Regulations of the Riverhead Town Code. Parking prohibited on Sound Avenue. Which one is this?
This is the seven, in front of the beer.
Oh, this is, uh, Jay King's place, yeah.
I, I spoke to the, uh, I was up there the other day. I spoke to, uh, the, one of the managers.
Right.
And told her what we were gonna do. I spoke to the, uh, the person who mans the front door, and he agreed that, that we should do it, so we're gonna do it.
Okay.
There's also, I've been getting a lot of complaints from the people on Baywood Drive that the limos and the buses are dropping off at Baywood Drive, so that's in there.
That's not true.
Yeah, well, he suggested that we do Baywood Drive to the, 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 the guy at the door.
Yep.
So we could add that, uh, may- maybe, uh, five hundred foot north on Bay- Baywood Drive.
Mm-hmm. And it's gonna have to go on Osborne Avenue too. It's gonna have to go on Osborne Avenue also.
You think that's enough? Huh? Well, Osborne, I mean, they can park because the fence is way off the road. They can park on the south side.
Yeah, no, but you're gonna have people walking on Osborne Avenue.
Okay, let's, let's, let's.
Let's, we do one, one at a time.
Go to the next one because the next one is the same thing, and if you want to do other ones, take it to the traffic safety committee and they'll look at it.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post a public notice of a public hearing to consider a proposed local law for an amendment to chapter two eighty-nine vehicles, traffic, and parking regulations of the Riverhead Town Code, turn to Sound Avenue. So we're making.
There's no left turn.
No left turn.
And when I was up there and I mentioned it, she went in the office, and guess what she brought out? A no left turn sign. Huh?
I asked her.
She said, we're gonna put, we're gonna put it up.
Good, tell her to put it up. We're holding the public hearing.
See? So.
That was it. So if we need additional parking restrictions, you know, we'll, I think you have to play it by year for the moment. I, it's a very big parking lot. I can't imagine they're, they're gonna fill that parking lot all night.
I can either, but when I see people running across Sound Avenue because the limos and the buses are dropping people off on Baywood Drive, and then you see, you have a busload of people getting out and running across Sound Avenue to get into the place, it is.
Well, that's a stupid limousine, that's a stupid limousine driver.
Yeah.
It is, but somebody's gonna get killed. Somebody's gonna get killed. And then we're gonna say, oh, stupid limousine driver.
That's right.
Yeah, traffic's a little.
Yeah, but they don't, see, the problem is, if we have no parking, like, that's, that, they're not parking. They're just stopping, letting people out.
I don't know, they're, they're sitting there, they're sitting there.
And then, and so, then, so. Huh?
All right, let's, if, bring up the traffic safety.
So, so I mean, that's like. We, we have to look at it.
They're sitting there.
We have to look at it.
All right. Twenty-nine, approves chapter two fifty-five application of animal rescue fund of the Hamptons, Inc., ARF Spring Film.
Spring fling.
Fling Animal Adoption Event.
Where'd it go to Howard?
Tanger Outlet.
Tanger Outlet, okay.
Oh, on the twenty-ninth April, same day we got the town cleanup. Look at that.
Why, um, I wonder they should be trying to adopt our dogs out too. Okay.
I'm sure we will.
Thirty, approves chapter two fifty-five application of East End Arts and Humanities Council Twenty-First Century Community Mosaic Street Painting Festival.
Yeah, twenty-eight.
Well, you know what the other thing about Jay King to, is too, is that he's catering events now. Somebody told me that they're having a party for eighty-five people, and he's catering it there.
Okay. Is the food any good?
And all the restaurants are in a frenzy, just so you know.
Okay. I've not heard that, so get that to code. And I, I don't know how he could cater it. I don't think he's got a full commercial kitchen in there.
There's a. Who's that?
It got a pizza oven. I was walked through. It's got a pizza oven.
It's not an oven. It's a, it's a heater.
Whatever. He can bring the food in from Holbrook or wherever he's bringing it in from, but.
Every, everything's back up or ev- it's, it gets frozen. All he does is.
So if he caters Jay King from Holbrook, what does that have to do with us?
Yeah.
Because it, it wasn't supposed to be that. It was supposed to be a cider tasting facility of what he was.
Johnny, if he ca- listen to what you just said. If he's catering from Holbrook, it has nothing to do with the cider tasting facility. The cider tasting facility has a pizzeria heat oven. Maybe someday it's gonna have more, but it, all he has is a pizzeria.
Okay.
Well, it shouldn't because we don't love bars and restaurants on Sound Avenue, but anyway.
Yes. Okay.
And he doesn't make the pizzas there. They come in frozen, and all he does is set them up and put them in and eat them up.
We'll go.
All right, thirty-one, approves chapter two fifty-five application of Conic Land Trust Saturday, June third. Oh, they'd have a Nick, a Conic, Nick and Nicka.
Conic Nicka. Conic Nick and Nick.
I've not done the one.
Nick and Nick and Nick. How it feel?
Yeah, maybe, should, put that in my calendar.
Yes, one time.
You been to it?
Mm-hmm.
Usually have it in Southampton.
So.
I do all that. Democrats don't.
Good.
When this, uh, chapter ninety's gonna disappear for these shopping centers? They have plenty of parking lots.
I don't know. I thought.
Yeah, we sort of, yeah, we sort of sunset that. We gotta revitalize that committee.
All right, approves chapter two fifty-five application of Home Depot Development of Maryland, Inc. for the planned sale on their property April seventeenth through May thirtieth. Honestly, I don't know why they need that either. But that's the way we've been handling it. Thirty-three, authorizes town clerk to publish and post a public notice of a public hearing to consider the amendment of chapter three oh one entitled zoning of the Riverhead Town Code. What is this?
Movie theater. That's for fifty-eight.
Oh, this is the drive-in window.
That's accessory to movie theaters.
Yeah. Well, it's not accessory to movie theaters. It's, it's drive-through windows for restaurants. It's not an accessory to movie theater.
Well, here's, here's the problem now with this. Yeah. Yeah, no. Here's the, here's the problem now with this though. We're giving this, the, the shopping center everything he wants for this movie. What if a movie theater never comes here?
Under special permits.
Well, but then they don't do it. Well, I thought.
I don't understand. Why don't we wait until they get approved and then give them this stuff?
Okay. I thought that the drive-through window was going to be accessory to a movie theater, so that if he has a movie theater there, then the drive-through restaurant can exist. If the movie theater goes away, then the drive-through restaurant goes away.
Yeah. I, I have to agree with you. I have to agree with you.
Okay, so.
So this needs to come out, and we need to.
You need to go sit to, to two of you with Dawn Thomas and write that drive-through movie theaters, whatever you.
Yeah, it can come on. It's just a different section of the code. It's gonna be under shopping center and it'll be accessory to movie theaters.
And you two, cause. Can the two of you go see Dawn after the work session to see if you can make this what you want.
Right.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
From a special permit, so it's, it's not as a private.
All right.
Now, I know, but we.
Yep, that's true. Go see Dawn.
Yep.
It should be accessory to movie theaters only in the shopping center.
Cause I hate to give the shopping center everything he wants, and then the movie theater don't come, and he, he puts a dri- a, a drive-in out.
Oh, Dawn's here. Did you get it? I just have, I don't know. I just don't know where the right.
Speaking of.
I would love to be in the.
Dawn's sending us to you, Dawn. John and I. Come in.
Sorry?
Yeah, really, it's.
We don't disagree all the time.
Come on up, Dawn.
Are we, are we, are we discussing this now?
Well, here's Dawn, right here.
It's a mistake, Dawn, coming in here.
That was, that was dangerous.
Yeah.
Come on, Jody.
Here we go.
Okay, so. In the shopping center zoning district where the proposed movie theater is going.
Yes, this one, right?
Correct. I would like to see that drive-through windows are accessory only to a movie theater use on a property.
I'm gonna jump on that. I would like to see that too.
The only.
Cause they can't just put a drive-through window on the shopping center zoning unless they have a movie theater on the premises.
Is that legal?
Then let's throw McDonald's in some.
That's what we're asking you.
It, of course it is. It's zoning.
Well, I mean, if you can rationalize why, then yes, it would be legal. So that's the question. Then the second part of the question is, is, I don't know how it works with the current potential movie theater, because I don't know what they're.
Anybody could put a movie theater in the shopping center zoning. We're saying that you can only have a drive-through restaurant accessory to a movie theater. Yep?
If you have a movie theater, well, but the, but it's in a separate building, so, and it's a separate.
It's on the same property, like.
I don't know, I don't know.
No, but it wouldn't be an accessory used to the, it would be its own use. It wouldn't be an accessory to the movie theater.
Yeah.
But it would have to be on the same parcel as the movie theater.
Well, then that, yeah, maybe you could do it that way.
Yeah. Cause I can't see it being a separate room.
But you, the way we set it up is by special permit, and there's a lot of criteria that are in there. I only, my only concern would be
Right, which kinda covers that.
that it, it may be too narrow. You have enough criteria where if you felt it was inappropriate, maybe you could say no to it. You know, in our current code, the way the code reads, not ness- not in that particular section, but in our special permit code section.
Okay, so.
You have a lot of latitude there to say, you know, consider the conditions of the property, the parameters, the distance from different things, and so you could manage it that way. I just, if you say it has to be accessory to a movie theater use, the, the only concern I have is you have a, you could get into a little bit of a.
Spot zoning issue?
Yeah, because there's, if you only have one movie theater and you're not having probably many others, you know.
Uh, you know what? We've done it a hundred times over, and I can give you several examples in the code, but.
Okay.
Where, where what we allowed was the only thing that, yeah.
Where, yeah. Yep.
Can we tell him?
So, and it's in the entire shopping center zoning district. So, we don't know that a movie theater's going in the old Walmart building. If somebody else has a big box store and they wanna put a movie theater there, and they can have a drive-through as, uh, on the property, whereas right now, drive-throughs are not permitted in the shopping center zoning district.
Can we do that? Right. But they may not play the.
Dawn. Okay.
I can find out whether they signed an agreement.
No, yeah, i- if he, if they sign an agreement.
Charlie Cuddy's the guy to ask.
If they sign.
Mr. Cuddy, do you know if they signed a, you should not have walked in here.
Look at this. Hey, everybody's popping their head in today. It's almost like we summons don't.
No, no, but if, if they sign an agreement.
Movie theater, drive-through.
We'll give you the.
Do you know, do you know whether they signed an agreement with the movie theater company yet?
Would you that?
I didn't do business like that.
Cause the board doesn't wanna do this unless we know there's a signed lease with the movie theater company.
I, I can get you that information, but I, I think, I know they have it. They've had it for a while. They've gotten back actually drawings and floor plans for me, so.
All right, so tell, tell your contact that we're probably not gonna do this till we know that there's a signed lease.
Nice.
Okay, that's fine, right? It's gonna be signed very shortly.
And I'm.
Good.
Okay, that's good. That's a good shot in the, uh.
And I'm also, and I'm.
More good news today.
Thank you.
I'm also, I'm, I'm concerned about the special permit criteria existing on more properties along Route fifty-eight, better zone shopping center. So I wanna make the drive-through as a permitted, or as a special permit, only under the movie theater zoning code. So where we've added movie theater to the shopping center, that you can have a drive-through if there's a movie theater on the property.
Okay, I understand. And that, that's, actually, that's one of the legal criteria. They ask you to have at least two restaurants in the center.
Yep. Well, they already have a Chinese restaurant there, and they have.
And then you're, you don't wanna live in.
Yeah, I don't wanna do anything.
I'm not, you can let me comment on this to like think about it.
All right, Charles, if you can let us know that they have a signed lease, then we will reconsider. Just let them know where. We've done a lot for them, and now we wanna see something that's reciprocal.
I want to.
Right, dearie. Them drive-throughs. I don't wanna see them.
Find out, and if they don't have it done, this is waiting on them. And Jerry Grue should know that we're serious, because I used to stalk the guy with Tony Coates.
I don't wanna see drive-throughs in every piece of property that's in shopping center.
And I knew, I knew that was a concern that you would have, so I definitely made sure that we did it so that you would have a lot of discretion over where it went, but you won.
All right, if it's signed, then. Okay. Thank you, sir.
There are certain.
Let's, let's not.
Okay, we, we already figured it out. We already got this figured out.
We're not gonna do anything. Jill, take that out for now.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Dawn.
You're most welcome. Is that all?
Thank you.
That's it.
Until.
Don't go anywhere. No, I'm just kidding.
Just for the minute. All right. Ratifies the authorization of the simplified execute a fire watch and hold safe, hold safe and harmless agreement, uh, for South of Theater for their Pink Floyd tribute that they did already.
I missed it.
Well, these are light shows.
How, how.
We good with that? We did it already.
Yeah.
Did it already.
Thirty-five, we're, we're that quick. Authorizes the release of Cyclane Security Hampton, Jeff, Jeff.
Seventy thousand dollars. A lot of money.
Yeah, well, good. Make sure before you send that check, I got a letter from.
The summer concert series?
Damn right.
Seven, thirty-six, authorization to publish advertisement for snack vendors for the town of Riverhead.
We do that.
Thirty-seven, approves chapter two fifty-five application of Sport Car Club of America New York Region Solo Driving Event.
There's, there's.
Three Sundays.
Yeah, cause that fits in the zoning.
Huh?
Well, we gotta revitalize that committee, Jill.
Thirty, thirty-eight, awards bid contract and mechanical maintenance and emergency services for Riverhead Water District. This is a bid we, uh, do all, every year, well, recently every year.
That's a contract.
It's nice, we even get the John Collins letters in here. Thirty-nine, awards bid distribution, leak detection, survey, contract, Riverhead Water District. This is a standard bid we've been doing.
I see. Yep.
Okay, secret resolution. Wait a minute, did I pass something?
No.
Forty-two.
No, this is part of that water.
Well, that's part of the water?
Yeah.
It says village clerk, somebody's.
I know, we have to change.
Oh, this is part of the, is this the public hearing?
This is the.
Yeah.
Yep.
After they were voting, right?
All right, that resolution, which I didn't get the number of, cause I went past it, that was the resolution to call.
There you go, that's the next one.
Calling, yeah, but that other resolution was a resolution, I think, for the public hearing for the water district.
Okay, wait a minute now.
That's right.
For the, in the, um, generators, everything Mark Conklin spoke about. In the beginning, there's, these resolutions look different. That's what that is. That's the resolution for the five million dollars bond authorization for the water district. We good with that?
Yeah. Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's forty-one.
I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is forty, I don't know. Is that forty-one?
Forty-one, yes. So forty and forty-one.
This one.
Forty-two, ratify seasonal clerk's renovation requirements.
Is that the list he just gave us?
Can we finish these resolutions?
No, but we should make sure that increase is two percent.
The fourteen dollar per hour one, John. No, this is Brittany, not any.
This is for, uh, archery specialist.
Right, that's one of the ones he spoke about, but that's not the one. Points a recreation specialist. This is the, um,
About forty-two.
Well, he told us what they were doing. The archery guy.
This, this.
He's raising everybody's salary.
The next, the next one.
Yeah, but, three percent.
That's not resolution forty-four.
And he's gotta get that down to two percent.
Saving salaries for the beach manager, senior park res- resolution forty-four. Yeah, we're gonna have to bring that down to two percent.
Right.
Nah, I support it as written.
So, all right, who wants that two percent? Me?
Me.
Me.
All right.
I, you know what? That would be all fine and dandy if it was January. But you get guys sitting in those same positions that came in in February, and a guy gonna be doing the exact same job making less.
I know. Life is not fair.
Because you guys missed the one percent six months ago.
Life is not fair.
Yeah, and you know what? We just negotiated the union contract after the fact, so.
That is.
Less. Okay.
We didn't negotiate anything yet.
Let's go back. I, to the fourteen dollars. We're gonna pay her fourteen dollars. He wants to pay her, how many years she been here? Seventeen?
What level?
The, the beach manager, what level? Oh, let's go back. That's what I said. I know that. That's what I'm asking you. How many, how long has she been here?
No, the other ones. She doesn't even on, she's not on this scale. She's not on this scale.
Right.
This is a scale for the beach manager and park attendant. She was.
She's a beach manager.
Senior, senior park attendant.
Senior park attendant.
Well, that's just gonna have to make sure that all these numbers that are in here are only two percent increase.
Oh, yeah.
She's a recreational specialist.
She's a, she's a park attendant.
Right, but she might have been a recreational specialist there. She're making two percent increase, and I should make her now.
Still a lot of money. That's only, what, six dollars less we pay the cops? Four time cops?
What's that?
What we pay them?
Twenty, twenty-one.
What?
Twenty or twenty-one an hour?
Yeah, twenty hours.
Hi, Scooter. See ya.
Twenty, twenty, twenty and change.
Do you want a hand with that? Why don't you just leave that there?
I.
I got it.
I'll get it.
Larry, or, you're gonna drop that?
Well practiced.
You're.
Well practiced.
Just get the picture when he falls.
They're all college kids.
Yeah?
They're all college kids.
All right, so what are we doing? We're going two percent on the other one, and the fourteen dollar an hour one, I really.
I'm gonna go for the sum.
He's just gonna make sure that any salaries in the recreation budget are not getting more than two percent of what they were paid last year.
That's what we're gonna do with this one.
Good, good.
Well, he has, he has slipped three percent in before. He has, he's talked about this.
Always.
He just said he's always been.
Yeah.
Always.
I know, but you know what?
He just never really, uh.
Right.
All right, forty-five, ratifies the appointment of a senior park attendant to the recreation department.
Hmm.
That may not be the right salary because we may be changing.
Mm-hmm.
He may, he's not gonna get seventeen twenty-five, so that's solid.
What was the starting date? I'm sorry, 'cause I hear my, to red. Is it about twenty or something?
Effective March twenty-first. Sarah Freeborn. Well, that's gonna get adjusted because the level three is not gonna be seventeen twenty-five. It's gonna be slightly less.
So says you.
Yep, so says three of us.
Find out when push comes to shove.
All right, we might. We have another secret, resolution forty-six. Well, this is just a groundwater tank. This is a, oh.
This is septic tunneling, right?
Bond for the water tank.
Should've run spot.
No, the other one was the piping.
No.
Okay.
But, there's gonna be a third one too.
Now, I think the piping and the generators might have been mixed together. Um, forty-eight, awards bid for dry hydrated lime calcium chloride.